Welcome to our regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Today is Wednesday, May 18th. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call for attendance.
Member Candell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Harrah.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Mayor Homer.
Here. As is our custom, would you please, if you're able, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? But before we begin, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the victims of the shooting in Buffalo, New York. That was a community like ours. It happened in a community center like ours, a grocery store. It happened to people like those in our community. I'm thinking about what we can do to change ourselves. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The first item on this evening's agenda is public comment. Are there members of the public in attendance this evening in our chambers or online that would like to make comments or ask questions regarding items that are not on the agenda?
Either in the chambers or on Zoom, raising their hands if you'd like to make public comment? And there's no public comment?
Thank you very much. The next item on the season's agenda are presentations and proclamations. This evening, we have an update from Larkspur Cordera Madera School District Superintendent Brett Geitman. I would like Councilmember Vice Mayor Paulson to introduce.
So Mr. Mayor, the superintendent's currently attending the Board of Trustees meeting for the school district, and he's asked that the council consider taking this matter out of order and allowing him to make his presentation when he can arrive by Zoom later in the meeting.
Of course, and when that opportunity arrives, would Vice Mayor Paulson please provide an introduction?
Glad to do that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that guidance, Mr. City Manager. The next item on this evening's agenda is approval of the consent calendar. Are there items council members would like to remove for further discussion? Or consideration? Are there members of the public that would like to remove items from the consent calendar to ask questions or make comment?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our Zoom participants or in our council chambers. We have one public comment from James Holmes.
James Holmes, Larkspur, I'd like to ask one quick question about 4.3, please.
Sure.
Can I just ask it now, or should I?
Yes, please, please, please do, and we'll see if it's worthy. Is that all right to take it in this way? Take a question? Please, James.
Yes. Does the council intend to implement hybrid hearings for other boards and commissions similar to the hearings that the council conducts?
I would ask the city manager to provide us the current information on this matter.
Now, now that the councils had a few under their belt and we have a sense of how they work, city clerk and I have been discussing how to extend these opportunities to other boards and commissions. It's possible we will do it, but it may be a little more limited in its technology, maybe like a single camera shot rather than for your meetings, we have a technician here who's changing the camera angles and things like that.
Does that provide helpful information, James? I hope it does.
Yes, yes, thank you. Is there an anticipated timeframe?
No, I don't have an anticipated timeframe soon.
We'll keep you posted. All right, are there any further comments from the public regarding items on the consent calendar?
No raised hands? And there's no further public comment?
All right, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent calendar. Would you please call a roll call vote and signify by saying aye?
Councilmember Candell.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrah.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Aye.
Mayor Homer.
Aye. The consent calendar is approved. Thank you very much. The next item this evening is city manager's oral report. Good evening, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A bit of a repeat on a few items from the last meeting. I want to again emphasize that we have two vacancies on the planning commission. I hope that members of our community who are giving us some thought will go to our website and download the application and turn it in. Because it's a very important role to play for our community on the planning commission and we would like more participation, so please apply. The other thing I wanted to make sure is if you haven't been to livinginlarkspur.com, I'll probably keep saying this at every meeting, please visit the website, subscribe so that you're getting all of our emails related to our housing element and the things that we're going to be considering with respect to growth in our community over the next several decades. And then also, it's not too late to participate in the interactive exercises that are on the website so that we can include your input into our first analysis that we need to turn in soon to have it evaluated by some of the regional agencies that are helping guide us through all the new rules that exist. So I'm going to leave it at those two things and turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there questions of the city manager from council members reporting his report this evening?
I have one comment.
Councilmember Way.
I think it's important that we inform the public about the planning commission, that you don't have to have experience as a builder or an architect, or you just need to be a community member who's really interested in directing and guiding the future of Larkspur and where we're going to be building new residential units and housing, because I love people who are not necessarily had any experience in building to realize that it's very important that you participate also. In fact, one of our planning commissioners is an anesthesiologist, so you can come from a very big variety of backgrounds.
Sometimes it takes an anesthesia.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that?
Yes, Councilmember Harrah.
Thank you very much for those comments, and those are very well taken and I hope taken seriously by members of the public who may be listening in tonight. I just wanted to note that two members of the city council previously served on the planning commission, myself and our mayor, and it was terrific experience. It was really my introduction to local government, how it functions, how it works, how it engages with the public. And I wouldn't be here today if I didn't have such a terrific experience serving on the planning commission, and I really encourage anyone who is considering that to take it seriously and go forward with an application.
Any other comments regarding the city manager's report? Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yeah, just a quick question. Dan, I'm wondering what we're using for social media to get the word out? I mean, I think I saw the website and I think you said that some messages were being sent to get people to subscribe.
I'm going to have to ask Assistant to the City Manager Shannon O'Hara to tell me because I don't know the answer to the question. She's our social media guru.
So we've done a mix of in our e-newsletter as well as primarily promoting it on Instagram, just both through regular posts, and we've actually done a couple of paid posts. We should probably do a couple new ones to remind folks, but we have had a decent reach, so these numbers are approximate, because I don't have the analytics in front of me off the top of my head. But we did do a modest advertising campaign, particularly when we were trying to get folks to identify maybe sites we'd have. And we got about 1,000 folks to actually see the ad. So it is out in the community and we have put it on next door, but we should remind folks again, right? We all see ads constantly and are barbed with information and to make time to actually go through and do the exercise, especially as there are deadlines approaching.
Great, thank you.
We also did a direct mailer for those of us who still look at direct mailers. We did do one of those, too.
Other questions? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding the city manager's report?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members in Zoom. And there's no public comment?
Thank you very much. We'll move to council members' oral reports and comments. Do we have any reports this evening? Catherine.
Well, first of all, I want to say it's great to be back sitting here with my colleagues, and thank you very much for all your support as I've been navigating some interesting things. So let's see, since we last met, I attended the police, Central Marine Police Authority meeting and the Central Marine Fire Council meeting, or the, yes. I think just a couple of the key things, we passed the budget for both departments and adopted some new pay schedules and some new promotional schedules, which for both departments, which was great. There was also a presentation by the lieutenant about the AB 481 military equipment use report, and that was a very comprehensive report about what items and resources our Central Marine Police Authority uses through that. And much of that is coming out of new legislation that is looking at more transparency by our police force in California. So if anybody's interested in that, it's all available on the Central Marine Police Authority website. I also today was on the Project Home Key Public Safety Meeting, which we meet once a month on that subcommittee. Project Home Keys Community Advisory Committee meets once a month also, and this is one of their subcommittees. It was really a whole discussion on the hour about the Community Safety Ambassador Program that they want to implement. Now, none of this is going to take place until the building's built and the residents are there, but this working group is trying to help create policies that will be in place when the residents arrive, which won't be until next spring or summer. But I'll continue to update that on that. It's a committee that is made up of law enforcement, community members, neighbors, and also the two people that, one of the people that we appointed that represent Larkspur specifically. So the third thing was the Chamber of Commerce had a very successful event called a cornhole festival at the 70th anniversary of the Bonner Shopping Center, and it was very, had a good turnout, and I really think we need to give Julie Servetto a lot of credit and her team for putting that together. If you get a chance to go over the Bonner Center where the bocce ball courts are, one of our residents, Richard, oh my gosh, I'm slipping on his last name, who was on our Heritage Committee, is working with the Canal Alliance and the Art Center of the Canal Alliance, and they built a, they did a mural. It's a really nice mural and really doing sort of the full spectrum of 70th anniversary celebration there. And I'm really fascinated to see if we can get some more public art and murals here. But that was really good. I think the Chamber of Commerce has a lot of functions that are coming up, and they're going to need all of us to attend and support, particularly the wine stroll and also some other events that they hope to do as they get more robust. So I have just two more things. Touch Trucks is coming up this weekend. Are you, were you going to report on that, Gabe? This Touch Trucks is a benefit for the Larkspur Friends and Library and the Commons Foundation. It's really family-friendly and age-appropriate. It's a whole bunch of working trucks that boys and girls get to climb on and touch and sit in, and it's right up the alley for people like Gabe who has a three-year-old, he's a four-year-old, perfect. The tickets are $25, and it's going to be on the east parking lot of Redwood High School on Sunday the 22nd. So really great opportunity for people to come out and do a family-friendly event that supports the library. And then lastly, Ember Stomp, I think you brought it up, Dan, at last year, last month's meeting, but Ember Stomp is on May 28th, and it's at the Marin Civic Center. It's a free event. I'm promoting it because I'm on the board of Fire Safe Marin. It's a wildfire prevention festival with music and lots of vendors who will be presenting fire-safe landscaping, fire home hardening materials that you can use, and it's from 11 to 5, and it's free. And food trucks, you'll have to pay for your food, but other than that, it's free. So last thing, that was coming up on May 28th, so we won't be meeting until after that. I wanted everybody to know about that. That's all.
Thank you, Catherine. Other council member reports this evening?
Sure, yeah, I'll go briefly. So I had two things. One is I have been also trying to follow the whole 1251 South Aliso, you know, how that's been developing, and they had the ribbon cutting for the Casa Buena a week ago, I think, and I was there. And I also went to the Ward Street facility, and I've been really trying to see if I can, you know, be onsite more to get more of an on-the-ground feel for this. And then today I had a lunch meeting with the Cordera Madera mayor, and we talked a good bit about Casa Buena. So I'm, you know, nothing to report specifically, but, you know, as, you know, Councilmember Way and Candell are getting more into the details of, you know, the, you know, the planning and implementation of 1251, I'm, you know, trying to get an education of all the other facilities and fact checks and, you know, seeing what community concerns have been addressed there, what best practices are to what extent. But I'm very eager to hear the two of you, you know, report back more, so I appreciate what you've brought up so far. The second thing is really just to echo the city manager. I took it upon myself, I have this ragged printout here, which is all from Living in Larkspur, and it's a beautiful map of what's going on. So I reached out to the Murray Circle, you know, North Magnolia folks, and about, it seems, I met with a few on Sunday, and we walked by. And I think it's a great exercise to go to your neighborhood and to walk to every lot there and to think, okay, this is a cleaner, you know, we really don't want to lose this facility or, you know, we're no tie, that brings in a lot of traffic. Or, you know, here's Swiss Garage, which is not only not going to reopen, but probably has toxic issues. So to get feeling boots on the ground and what the options are and what the community thinks. And about 25 North Magnolia people were involved in this process, so, you know, through outreach. And I'm going to try to go to Green Bray next and then to Central Marin. And I find that there haven't been any big red flags or huge objections, but, you know, as the city manager said, I think it's just so important that our community gets engaged, knows about it. We continue advertising. I mean, I think the housing element and the RENA numbers are very consequential, and there's a lot to think about, and I'm feeling cautiously optimistic about the whole process. So any more to come, I'll report out next time, you know, if we meet with Green Bray or, you know, also the Larkspur Landing community or any others. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Harrah.
Just very quickly, I want to thank Councilmember Way for highlighting the activities of the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce, since I'm on the board there and have other roles in that context as well. This is an exciting year, a challenging year for the chamber, but we have lots of things in the works. And the cornhole event was fun. I was a volunteer at that event and cleaned up afterwards. I did have a little difficulty understanding the origins of the name of the event, since I grew up on the East Coast and it was called a beanbag toss. But I guess the other people do different things. So it was, it was, it was a great event, and I was very pleased to participate, participate in it. Secondly, also reflecting on Councilmember Way's comments about the fire and police council meetings, I was unable to attend those meetings, although I did try to participate by telephone, wasn't able to for reasons I'll explain in a moment. The reason I was unable to attend, I was, attend those meetings is that I was over in the city of Richmond attending kind of a pre-retirement party for the city's mayor, Tom Butt, who is a person, well, he's actually being termed, so he would, he would object to calling it a retirement. A pre-termining out party was maybe a better characterization of it. But it was a great event, and it was a reminder that the city of Richmond is one of our closest neighbors. People don't remember that, but they are really pretty much just down the street. When you think about it, they're just on the other side of the bridge, and they're a huge city and a very diverse city with a lot going on, a lot of challenges that, some of which we face, some of which we don't face. But it was just a reminder that sometimes we get very narrow in our focus here in Marin on the challenges that we have here, and it was a good reminder that we do belong to a larger community, and we have friends all over the place. So here's the explanation for why I couldn't attend the meeting. Tom arranged to have his event at someplace, I think Point Melody, I can't even remember.
Yes, exactly. What's the name of it? Rhyme again?
The Black Star Pirate Barbecue.
Black Star Pirate Barbecue.
I was just going to recommend.
It takes forever to get there over a long and bumpy road with many speed bumps, and there is no cell phone service. So I tried hard to join the meeting by telephone, having broken away from the event, but I couldn't do it. So that's my, that's my excuse for not being able to attend, but otherwise, yes, no, it was, it was a very unique venue and, and a lot of fun, actually.
Highly recommended.
And again, just a reminder of where we are in the North Bay, because we have friends everywhere. They're not just in Marin, they're all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to public hearings. We have one. This is an appeal of the planning commission decision to deny application of design review for area ratio number 21-11. It's a request for design review and a floor area ratio exception to permit substantial remodeling and 1,424 square feet additions to existing single-family residence and the conversion of the lower floor to a buy-right accessory dwelling unit at 39 Corte Toluca. And we have a staff report, please. I'm sorry, this is Scott, and you're not coming through on the Zoom, so I don't know if the mic's set on.
Try again. How's that? That's better.
Much better, thank you.
All right, so this is an appeal of the March 22nd Planning Commission denial of an application for designer view and a floor area exception for 39 Corte Toluca. And for some background on this site, this is lot 1,065 of the 1955 Green Bray subdivision number nine, and the lots in the subdivision vary in shape and size due to the hillside location, but they average about 9,200 square feet, and the project site is just under 8,000 square feet with an average slope of 17%. Just for some historical information, I'm sorry, it's going to... Sure. I could keep going. In the meantime, for historical information, I wanted to share that this is an area where this, of the city, where the subdivider recorded racially restrictive covenants that only allowed white stone property or live in the subdivision. The county's consultant for affirmatively furthering fair housing indicates that the state would like to see communities like Larkspur encourage new housing like accessory dwelling units to be developed in these areas that previously excluded people. In addition, I wanted to show that anyone that lives in this area may contact me for information on how to modify their racially restrictive covenant. The existing house was built in 1956 and had three bedrooms on the main level and a rempass room and storage on the lower level. In 2003, a prior owner of the site improved the storage space in the lower level into living space. The existing residence complies with regulations for lot coverage setbacks, height and natural state standards. The existing floor area of the site consists of the main level, that is 1,675 square feet. It has a 449 square foot garage and the 744 square foot understory level for a total floor area of 2,868 square feet. The existing floor area ratio is 36.2%, where 33% is permitted due to the slope of the lot, and the standard floor area ratio for a level lot would be 40%. That's okay with me. Oh, I could do it if you, it's letting me advance, right? This is, this is a elevation of the existing house that has the, the front elevations essentially a single story, like many of the sites in the neighborhood. There are, there are definitely other second story, there's two-story homes in the neighborhood. Many of them appear to be one-story in the front and have two stories on the under level because of the sloping condition, and some of them are two stories as viewed from the street. And I'm going to come back to this slide. The proposed project would convert the existing 744 square foot lower level into an accessory dwelling unit, and the ADU could be approved today with just a building permit. Larkspur regulations allow property owners to exempt ADUs from floor area, so if the ADU was created today and no other additions were proposed, the residence and garage area would be 2,124 square feet, and the owners could add 484 square feet to the residence and still be within the allowable floor area. The applicants are proposing a significant remodel to the residence in addition of 1,189 square feet, and the addition would include 331 square feet on the main level and 858 square feet on a new upper level. And with the garage total floor area of 3,313 square feet is proposed, which is 42% floor area ratio, and that doesn't include the second unit. So the proposed project includes significant demolition of the main level, and the existing lower level would remain largely the same as it is today with the remodel in addition of the kitchen. And then on the main level, there's an addition towards the front of the site and reconfigure, reconfiguration of the rooms and walls on that level. And then on the upper level is a master bedroom addition and an office. And the site, I don't know if you've read out the site, but it enjoys just amazing views of Mount Tealopeis from the front and views of the bay from the, from the rear side. And so I'm sure that addition will allow great views.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are you showing different iterations of the project through these slides?
There's one I was going to show, there is one iteration that was reviewed by the planning commission.
But that's no longer part of the project.
No, I just wanted to explain what changes they made in response to the planning.
It's confusing.
Okay, well, this is all, this is all the, there's only one, sorry, one slide that shows the prior design. This is the project design that was approved most recently by the planning commission. And these are the side elevations, and you'll see from the side elevation that the outline of the existing residence is shown. And so the project does include rebuilding all the walls on the main level, increasing the height of the walls and the roof at the main level as well as the addition. And then new upper level decks are proposed. And then one of the concerns that staff had at the original planning commission hearing was the side elevation, that's the upper, where the upper level is built right to the six-foot setback line and not setback further from that lower wall. But the plate heights inside for the second story addition are just eight feet, which is not an excessive height. They are proposing a 10-foot ceiling height in, on the main level at the single-story area. And then here's another section. The zoning regulations allow for exceptions to the floor area ratio, provided all the findings for a floor area exception can be made and the designer view findings can be made. And the city is required to find that the applicant has employed mass-reducing techniques such that the additional square footage over the floor area limit for, limit for the site is mitigated and does not result in a home that overbuilds the lot. The technique or culmination of techniques results in a design that either blends with the neighborhood or is of a unique architectural design that is sensitive to the immediate neighbors and compatible with the overall neighborhood character. The planning commission considered the project in January, and staff indicated that the overall design and style of the residence was compatible with the existing site and surroundings. But based on the story polls and project plans, staff believed the proposed massing of the front elevation, including a two-story entry tower that was proposed, would be out of character with the neighborhood. The planning commission believed that first design was too big. One mentioned reducing floor area by 150 feet or 200 feet, and many commissioners noted the design was attractive. The item was continued to allow the applicants to reduce the size of the home and the massing. The project was considered by the planning commission again on March 14th. In response to the planning commission's direction, the applicant made a number of changes to the design by lowering the building height, reducing the floor area and eliminating the entry tower. The overall floor area was reduced by 205 square feet. The planning commission members felt that there was still too much house for the lot, that the design could be further improved, and they denied the project. The city has received comments from two neighbors during that hearing process that the project would impair their distant views, and the city has also received several comments of support for the proposed project. Staff is recommending that the city council uphold the planning commission decision, but alternatives available to the city council include... but alternatives available to the city council include granting the appeal, which would be approving the project or remanding the project back to the planning commission. And that would conclude my staff report unless you have any questions for me.
Please, Councilmember Hara.
Actually, a question for the city attorney, because we, we've done this before. And I just want to make sure I understand, the public understands what's the standard of review for the city council in considering an appeal from the decision of the planning commission i- in this context.
So a city, appeal to this, in, in, in an appeal to the city council, the city council, here's the matter de novo. And so basically, the city council is required to make the same findings that the city, that the planning commission was required to make. So if the city council believes that the evidence in the record provides a factual foundation that you can use to bridge the facts to the standards and find that the project is approvable under the municipal code, then you can approve it. If you believe that the factual record does not support making those findings, then you should deny the project. If you think that it could be, if you can make the findings with conditions of approval, then you could approve the project with those conditions. But basically, you are now sitting in the, the same position as the planning commission and are required to engage with that, with the, with the application in the same way that the planning commission was.
That's why I asked the question. But al- also to be clear, even though technically it is a de novo review, among the things that we would want to take into account, I assume would be the actions of the subordinate agency, the planning commission and their review and assessment of this project.
That's correct. The, 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 the the record, the statements of the planning commissioners becomes part of the record that the city council would review. And so their observations about the project become additional evidence that you can consider in determining whether or not you can make the required findings.
Other council member questions? Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Elise, for that presentation. It's nice to have you on our staff now. Just to, couple of things to get started. It looked like between the first planning commission meeting and the second, the homeowners did a lot of changes. They reduced the two-story entry tower. They decreased the floor area. They reduced the size of the home slightly. But the response was by two commissioners, it's just too big for the lot. But they did engage in activities to reduce its bulk. So it felt like they were actually going through with the planning commission's interest. So is that accurate?
Yes, I believe that's true.
Okay. And the second thing, we don't have a view ordinance that, in Larkspur, I don't recall that we do. So although views are important for all of us, we actually don't have an ordinance that allows changes to properties based on view alone. Is that correct?
I have to say that that was not an issue. I researched in preparation for this, although the, at this, the planning commission level, they did, they didn't, they just dismissed those concerns for the believing there was no view ordinance, but I can't say that I'm an expert on the view ordinance today.
Yeah, Sky, you're nodding your.
That is, you're correct. The, the municipal code does not contain a view ordinance, which I would define a typical version of that as one where an additional basis to do not deny development is where what's being proposed would obstruct an existing view from a neighboring property or an adjacent property. The city does not have an ordinance like that.
Okay.
I think that the, the planning commission and city council have, have considered when neighbors have said that a project would obstruct an important view like of Mount Tam or the bay. But it's not something that is alone determinative of whether or not to approve a project.
Yeah. Because one of the findings for denial was compatibility with neighbors and I just want to see where we're going with that. So. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get some things out there right away.
Other council member questions?
Yeah, so through the mayor, I, I just have a quick question. Are we going to hear from the applicant or the neighbors who are complaining their views being blocked?
I'm going to offer the, I'm going to offer the applicant a chance to make a presentation after the questions are from council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll wait.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just for clarity, I mean, it's a ninety-page document, but I think one of the, the key conclusions here is, you know, I've been focused on the, the FAR. And I think my understanding is the, the existing structure is thirty-six point two. And then the first proposal was to bring it up to fifty-four percent. And then after modifications, I, I'm not clear, was that number forty-two percent or what was the final number?
Correct. Forty-two percent is where it was at for the final number.
Okay, and, and that's including the, the accessory dwelling unit?
No, that's, that's excluding the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
So it's forty-two percent without the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, and then, and then the survey done of properties within three hundred feet of that home showed that the max was forty-five. And that's with everything accessory dwelling unit or not. And I'm wondering if the ADU is material to the FAR calculation, you know, we're leaving the forty-two, we're leaving out the ADU number.
So the, the forty-five percent was actually the project site. And so the existing site was, was exceeds the floor ratio. When, because the city's regulations exclude the ADU from floor area.
Okay.
The, the area of the seven hundred and forty-four square foot ADU doesn't, doesn't increase the floor ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Just, just a follow-up on that. Again, the, the, the ADU issue is really a function of, I think, state regulation. It's not a function of our local ordinance.
Yes and no. So the, the state will not let us apply a floor area or anyone in the state to apply a floor ratio to preclude the development of a second unit up to eight hundred square feet. However, the city is not obligated to exclude floor area or sorry, ADU floor area from floor area. That's, that's, the city's gone above what the, the state allows. So conversion of an existing space to an ADU is definitely allowed, even if it takes you over floor area under state law if the applicant was proposing an addition like a detached ADU today that was eight hundred square feet. They could do that even though it, it takes them over the FAR and the, the city would have to allow it. But in other jurisdictions, the city could preclude the second story addition. If an applicant had rate, had, for example, converted that lower level to an, an ADU, there's no in other jurisdictions, they would, you wouldn't necessarily have to grant another addition to the main residence, but you'd have to allow the second unit. I hope that's.
Okay, but we don't have that constraint here.
So we, they, the city allows, just excludes the floor area in any case. So it's just never counted towards or it's never, it's not counted towards floor ratio.
Okay, that, that, that's helpful. So if it were to be counted, what would be the additional floor area?
Well, so the second unit would take it seven hundred, would make it seven hundred and forty-four square foot, square feet larger than what's proposed today.
Right. So it's going to happen anyway if that, if the project gets approved. It's just a matter of whether it counts for purposes of our decision.
Or it could happen anyway. If, I, I, I think what, what's important to keep in mind that if you strictly apply the floor area ratio, chances are people won't be encouraged to develop second units because that extra floor area is actually something that encourages.
Sure. No, I understand the policy behind it. I was trying to figure out what the implications are for this particular project and how big a project it will be. So.
I have a, a couple of questions, just to clarify. We mentioned several times that the floor area for the ADU is not considered in the FAR. But in the findings for the FAR, there were excessive bulk and mass were the reasons why they couldn't make the finding. The ADU is tucked in under the downslope side within the existing footprint. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that square footage is not in view?
No, not from the street. And the, and the upper level addition isn't in view from the yard. So.
The, the proposed second story is the additional bulk and mass that would be at issue in the project.
Correct. Definitely.
It's, it's a little over eight hundred square feet, that second story. Is that correct?
I have it at, yeah, eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet.
Well, I would find in, in our past practice, even during my experience during, in the plan, on the planning commission that eight hundred square foot second story is really not out of the ordinary. In fact, that's kind of the master suite formula on most addition projects. That's just my observation. So my question is, and I, I saw the drawings and I visited the sites, saw the story polls. The bulk and the mass from the street, you know, they've got the, the elements of the upper level kind of defined by breaks in the, the wall and the roof. So those are typical breaks in the bulk and the mass that are used to mitigate those sorts of concerns. So I'm wondering if what they're doing is so common to what we approved in other projects in terms of mass reducing techniques, how can they make the finding that it's so excessive?
I think.
Because I could point to about a hundred projects that look just like that.
I think part of the concern was also just the numbers.
That's what I'm going to get to. So if we're really excluding the floor area from the consideration, why is the math game so nuanced?
Well, it's still, it's still over, it's over floor area excluding the second unit.
I know, but we have discretion here. We're being asked to consider what amounts to slight intensification with new units. But actually, we have goals and policies that are encouraging private homeowners to be creative about where to put these units. I can't think of a more creative place is to tuck it in underneath the lower level of a downslope side of the house. So other than that, it's a normal looking project. To me, this is a sort of evolution that we're asking ourselves to consider, but we seem to be trapped in our old zoning ordinance. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we consider what I've asked about as we take the discussion forward. I think this is an important moment in Larkspur. Where we, where, we want to take credit for the ADUs, but we're and maybe the planning commission deliberately kicked it up to us this way to make this call. But I think this is an important project where we actually are seeing somebody proposing something that has very little impact. But it's achieving things that we're trying to get to in our general plan, a housing element and we're hoping that we can take credit for these ADUs in our RENA calculations. So I think we want to do everything we can to encourage where it's of minimal impact. So I'll leave it there and we'll move on to the applicant's presentation.
Hey, could I have a quick question before we do that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I, I just did a question. The photographs that were provided, I am guessing that those were provided by the applicant in order to show other houses are similar, but the chart, the FAR survey attachment three, I'm assuming that was provided by the city. And it's kind of a, a neutral document that included all houses, whether they're bigger or smaller. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
City attorney.
Just to, I wanted, before you moved on, just to elaborate on Councilmember Way's question. The city does not have a view ordinance, but the city manager reminded me that one of the findings required for this does state that the, it requires a finding that the proposed structure or addition avoids just avoids significant and unreasonable loss or interference with prominent scenic views. So, so it is not a prohibition, but it does require you to find that, that it's not a significant and unreasonable loss of a prominent scenic view.
Councilmember Hara. Just on the question of whether that ADUs will count for our compliance with RENA. I, I thought they were excluded.
They're, they're definitely included.
They are included.
And then we will be able to count a percentage of them as affordable units in, in lower income categories as well. And we'll probably need to justify that based on statistics for the Bay Area for what they, what they rent for generally.
I asked the exact same question, Councilmember Hoff, earlier today. So I interpret that as no individual ADU counts, but the sum of them all leads to some number that we get to credit toward the.
Yeah, each, each ADU counts.
But it counts cumulative.
But we can't, it, they each count, they each count towards the arena. So this one unit would count towards the nine hundred and seventy-nine that the city needs to provide. It, no, it counts as a full unit. The percentage part relates to if, if in our housing element, we say, let's say, we're going to provide ninety or provide ninety ADUs over this next eight years. There's only a, we can't say all ninety are going to be affordable housing. We'll have to, we'll have to only indicate that, for example, thirty percent might be low, lower, available for lower income. So that's what the percentage, we can't claim that all ninety are going to be affordable.
Right. So we can't really make that assessment in the context of an individual project.
Yeah, this one would count as a, a unit. This is the kind of unit that I would normally say might be moderate because of its size as a two-bedroom. And also because of the condition in that lower level of the residence, it's not quite as attractive as a brand-new detached second unit that might rent for above market rate.
Okay, that, that, that's helpful because I, you know, I'm, I'm always kind of worried about how we're going to meet our RENA obligations. And, you know, the focus of those obligations really is on, you know, really affordable for low, low income. And I think it's a legitimate question to ask whether in any project that's what's being contemplated or not. And what I'm kind of hearing is that it's probably not in this case.
Not affordable, you say?
Yeah, for low income.
Well, it also depends on the household size. So if there was a family living there, because, you know, it could be, it could be considered affordable, just we have to indicate, to sort of take a guess at what it's going to rent for and as a two-bedroom unit, just given the market rate.
That's fine. And I'm not trying to be argumentative here. I'm just trying to understand. Because we have a big challenge in meeting our RENA obligations. And I want to make sure I understand where we are taking advantage of opportunities and where we are not.
This might be a perfect unit for a member of the workforce. And there's no way for you to tell that it's not. I think that's a good enough reason. And I think speculating about who's going to, you know, how this is going to be used or not. There are guardrails to what can be and should be allowed here. And I think we need to stick to them. So we'll move to the applicants or the property owners' presentation. Thank you.
Am I able to see the presentation while I present or? Councilmember Candell, can you hear me? Nope, it's perfect. Okay, great. Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service to the community. I don't attend these live and I don't call into the meetings, but I do watch every single one of them on Zoom, which is wonderful in the background when you're trying to do other work. It's not as exciting. So I know many of you have been involved for a very long time, very thoughtful in everything that you do and say as it relates to projects within the community. And it's a very significant commitment. So as a citizen, we appreciate that. So my understanding is I have ten minutes. Is that correct?
Generally, yeah, well.
Okay, so.
We're here for you, so we'll give you some slack.
Yeah, I have enough material to speak for probably a hundred times that, but I will do my best to try to do it within ten minutes. The first thing I would like to point out, it didn't make it into the presentation, but we have difficulty in understanding how we have a fourteen hundred and twenty-four proposed square foot addition. When if we look at the data table, our existing is twenty-eight sixty-eight and the proposed is thirty-three forty-three. It actually should be thirty less than that because we only in the data table receive seven hundred and forty-four square feet of credit for the ADU and it's actually seven hundred and seventy-four. So by our math, we see it as a four hundred and seventy-five square foot addition. And perhaps at some point, somebody can explain where it is that we're, we're off or missing. But I just wanted to point that out as. But I just wanted to point that out as a starting point. And throughout the process, there's been a ton of errors. Miscommunication, lack of lead time, et cetera. So the lack of detail makes it very difficult to understand, you know, what is accurate and what isn't. The conversation you all just had. I think with a much better understanding and openness to how the Larkspur ADU code works is very different than how several members of the planning commission look at it and understand it. And that's basically why we're here tonight. And I'm going to try to take you through some of that. So I just point this towards here. Point it anywhere. Oh, my presentation did make it. This one. Thank you. So I have this up here. Because this was submitted late, so I didn't know it was going to be in. But this is where we went through the math. And we don't have to spend a lot of time on the math, but from our calculations, we're looking at a four hundred and seventy-five square foot addition in totality after the appropriate amount of ADU square footage is credited back. And maybe at least can speak to that later. So as you will see from the pictures, the property clearly needs updating and more space post COVID and work from home. We do have the unique downward sloping lot configuration. The new design, and I'll show you some detail in the presentation closely matches updated surrounding homes. It's inspired by other Larkspur approved home redesigns. It creates a house within the bottom seventy percent square footage within the and within the far mid range of remodeled homes on our street. There's 20 homes on our street. We've spent about $10,000 already in the project and having to resubmit if you folks don't find in our favor is about another $5,000 and more for the story polls that have been up for four months. On three twenty-two, as several members just pointed out, we addressed the commissioner concerns from the one twenty-five hearing. They provided minimal direction, direction. They told us to get staff input. And we were unable to do that and staff told us they could not help us because of staff shortages. Staff recommended based on all of our changes that council member way pointed out that the project be approved. However, the chairman of the commission, chairman counselor said, that's just a suggestion, not necessarily what they have to do. So the denial reasoning and the directions were very ambiguous. The senior, senior planner told the planning commission, we could not have another continuance unless only minor changes were required. When in fact, we had over one month remaining on our time limit. And Commissioner Wagstaff stated, quote, so close, it would not take a lot to get there, which was ignored by senior planner and staff. So that's why we're here, because we were told we could not take advantage of our remaining time, which was over a month. The hearing was on three twenty-two. Our time expired on four twenty-nine. As I said, and I will demonstrate shortly, multiple commissioners do not understand the city ADU code. And that is definitely influencing their decisions to deny, at least in our case. There's been numerous errors in communication details, lack of lead time during the process. Story polls have been up for four months at a cost of over eighty-five hundred dollars. There's been zero concerns from any neighbors and they've certainly had ample time to drive by and see them. And particularly with all the flags with the wind that are now scattered all over the neighborhood. The immediate next door and below neighbor have signed a letter of support. In addition to sending an email supporting the project. The design does allow for the two bedroom, one bath ADU, which is needed by the city, as our understanding is only three were approved last year. Three quarter Toluca homes have sold in the past 30 days. Two more are coming on the market. Neighborhoods changing per Commissioner Swisher's comments at the hearing, much like the Heather Gardens area of Larkspur, where a recent project was approved, where a significant far variance was granted. Staff stated in that report approval, quote, as indicated in the attached survey of neighborhood far's the current development surrounding this lot ranges from point one seven to point five three with an average of point three six and a medium point three four. This proposal requests a point four five far, not ours, the Heather Gardens, which is above the average and median, but lower than the greatest far in the neighborhood. Generally, staff finds proposed far be consistent with the development pattern in the neighborhood is the actual floor area of the residence is not the largest in the immediate neighborhood. We feel that our project is incredibly similar and all we want is fair and equitable consideration relative to the rest of the town. So this is almost current. We have replaced the dead grass with bark and mulch and took advantage of the MMWD program to remove our sprinklers. So there is some bark, but as you can see, sixty-three years old, we've been there since 2000. It's a low profile, the downward sloping lot, you only see the first floor. So further down in the back is where the proposed ADU is. Remodels overdue and it's consistent with other homes on the street. And to that end, you can see what I just showed you in the middle, and then you can see multiple homes almost directly next to us, thirties across the street, fifteens a little further down. Twenty is next to thirty and then seventy is a brand new property that was approved and was flipped and took about a year to redo. So there are some examples there. And then this inset has, you know, what we're proposing as it relates to the surrounding homes. I feel that it closely matches the updated surrounding homes. Even more so because we've got breaks in the roof line. We don't just tack on a large addition on top of the garage like some of these other folks have done and tried to be sensitive to those breaks within the roof across. The inspiration was several other updated homes in Greenbrier. I know they were further out than where the survey goes. But the idea was they're both on Britannia was this farmhouse with the multiple different roof lines, breaks, the entry, et cetera. So that's where that came from. So the commissioners on the planning commission. This lack of knowledge and interpretation has definitely negatively influenced their decisions and precluded an unbiased view of our project as demonstrated by their comments at the meetings. Clearly come from a lack of knowledge of the code, lack of understanding the significant need for affordable housing in our city and how an ADU helps meet those needs. From the first PC meeting and again at the second, it was clear these commissioners faced their view decision on a quote, seven bedroom home, the house is too big for the lot, but they're including the ADU space in violation of code. The request, they made a request to remove the staircase. It's been there for sixty-three years since the house was built that connects the ADU and is not required by code. So to be asked to remove the original feature would be needless, also be a fire hazard. Added expanse and does not support the intended use of the space, adult children, aging parents, family caretakers. However, we've added a door at the bottom of the stairs for additional privacy and separation, although not required by code. So we feel that we've been, we've tried to be thoughtful and address everything that we can. So I know this is a meeting is in regards to the denial on three twenty-two. But I wanted to provide, if you'll indulge me, the comments from one twenty-five, which was kind of the basis, I think, for how we got to this point and influenced the decision for denial a second time on three twenty-two. So Commissioner Wagstaff said, and I quote, and this is in the record. This is an example where the ADU provisions allow for a seven bedroom house. House is too big, should be reduced, could support a second floor. And then his quotes, which didn't make, make the transcript, but are on the the recording case where the ADU issue is allowing a seven bedroom house he built, cut one hundred and fifty to two hundred square feet out from the addition. With the ADU, the far is fifty-four point three. Commissioner Talber agreed with the comments made by Wagstaff. ADU is almost a loophole in this case to build a big house. How can you guarantee use as an ADU versus just gaining two extra bedrooms that don't count against the square footage and far? Don't have to count the eighty stairs and no access to outside, moving the stairs would make more sense. Kill same way as Brock. ADU is loophole to build house that is too much outside of far, which is even worse. Commissioner Cunslar agree with the other commissioners, appreciates the addition of an ADU. Designs attractive, does not use enough mass reducing techniques. Very beginning of the hearing, he asked Lorraine Weiss, the consultant on staff, if it would be correct to add the six hundred and eighty square foot residence and seven hundred and forty-four square foot ADU for a total of fourteen twenty-four being added. And that's when we were told to contact staff for the direction clarification on commissioner comments. When we contacted staff, we were told they were too busy, staff shortages couldn't help us. Commissioner Chalmers, she had a few concerns, but she seems to understand how the ADU works because she said it is within the rules. And she was open on the design and realistic about the ADU being within the rules. First meeting, Commissioner Swisher did not attend. At the meeting, the staff supported endorsed the project based on the changes that we made, some of which council member way pointed out earlier. I'll quickly go through and repeat them again. Elimination of the entry tower, reduced building height, roof at stairwell pulled back. Recessed entry door, recessed entry ceiling height results in design minimized perception of bulk to offset the requested far exception will not result in significant impact of light error neighbor views. Would result in residence that does not overbuild the lot and will be compatible with the neighborhood character. Staff told the planning commission that a hearing result option could be approval subject to modify further for staff approval. Senior planner told the planning commission that would only be an option if minor modification were required. And this will require significant additional work, even though Commissioner Wagstaff stated so close, it would not take a lot to get there. The degree of work was never clarified, determined if it was significant or minor. The commissioner Wagstaff's comments implied they were minor. Extension did not expire until four twenty-nine. Extra days went to waste and denied us a fair and equitable opportunity to modify and re-present to the planning commission. Report also indicated the proposed design would be the second largest house on the block. When it will in fact be in the bottom seventy percent of square footage and within the far mid range of remodeled homes on the street. Twenty homes on quarter Toluca, twenty percent are above a forty-one far, forty-five are above three thousand square feet and thirty are above thirty-three hundred square feet. Comments, Wagstaff, actual floor, floor area did not change. So we're being penalized in the first meeting that we had to double count the tower. We took out the tower, which reduced it by two hundred square feet, but he didn't feel that we really did what we were supposed to do. Refer to the roof plan and stated, there's a lot going on. It's nothing to do with the form that is supporting. We're not architects, we're not designers. I still don't know what that means. Design could be so much better. Don't know what that means. Opportunity to produce something very special. Don't know what that means. Rooms upstairs are big. Okay, form follows function. He pointed out the floor plans relative to the roof plants. Still understand what that means. Lot going on, it doesn't support form that is sporting. I want to pass the house, but it could be so much better. I don't know quite what to do about it. Could do a lot more with this. Produce something that is a little more special. So close, it would not take a lot to get there. Always thought that all houses should be forty far, but that has never happened. Would like to give the benefits out, but form follows function. They could do better. Is it okay? I guess it is. Wish it were easier. I want to prove, but trying to hang on to square footage they had. Commissioner Top. There you go. I'm here. I got it back. Elimination of the tower helps with the massing designs nice, too much house. By not counting the ADU realities that the space is still there and is more far within the ADU. So it's an overbuilt house. Commissioner Cunslar agrees with Talber and Wagstaff. Things about the design he likes, compliance with the design review guidelines. Height's been reduced, tower eliminated, still has issue with the size of the house, appreciates commitment to solar. Not there yet in terms of size. Large discrepancy between proposed and allowable floor area ratio. Like to see further modifications. Continuance is not permitted at this point. On the fence, tilted to ask for further modifications, it's not permitted. It's a bridge too far. Process is not intended to be punitive. Would like to find a way to yes, really close, just not there yet. Staff recommendations are just the recommendation, not a requirement for the planning commission to enact. Commissioner Swisher, thank God. Handsome design, no objections. Modifications made are in character with the neighborhood. I would approve the project. Quote, can see why the commissioners think this is overbuilt for a lot. When walking down the neighborhood, there are very similar houses being proposed. There are, however, some single story houses nearby, which may cause this project to enlarge in comparison. I commend the residents for their effort, putting in the time, money and following the recommendations of the previous meeting to revise their plan. I disagree with the other commissioners. So this is every house on our street, lot area, floor area, unfinished garage, average slope, total square footage at far. After our remodel, we'll be within the street norms for square footage, thirty-three forty-eight and far at point four two. So you can see in the yellow, those are all the far's forty-one to forty-three and the square footage in the blue, those are all the square footages that are larger than ours. There's five. So this is a repeat of where we started. And then that's all I have until we get to a closing statement. I have a number of additional exhibits that quote, many errors, lack of fair and equitable treatment, lack of timely communication, lack of adherence to the permitting of the streamlining code, attention to detail, et cetera.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I'll ask for council member questions of the applicant. Or the palant, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I have a question for the city attorney.
Sure, Scott.
All right. So so my question is, a project comes along and they say, we're going to build a an ADU and it gets approved and it's never used as an ADU. How is that handled? I mean, you know, obviously once a project's approved, they can do whatever they want with their property. They don't have to rent it out, they can, that their kids live down there, whatever they want. So is there anything, you know, that, any remedy if somebody says they're going to make it an ADU and then they don't?
Short answer is that there is not. The way the state law is structured and the municipal code follows this is that there is no mean, there, there's no requirement that the owners of an ADU actually put it on to the market to be rented. There are provisions that can be applied regarding to the terms of rental. But you, there is no requirement that an ADU actually be rented and so it can sit empty. It can be used by the property owners for their own purposes. But there is no requirement that it actually be used as rental housing.
Well, thank you. I I have any other question at this point. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes, Scott, I think you answered the question, but just to be really clear. Is the state law structured without any restrictions for personal use?
No, I mean, if I understand the question correctly, does it, does state law prohibit the owner of an ADU from using it for their own benefit?
Correct.
The answer is no. Basically, to summarize the, the structure of state law briefly. Once an ADU is created, it can be rented, a city can require that it be rented for a period of no less than thirty days so that it's not used for short term rentals. A city can also require and state law actually prohibits the separate sale of an ADU. But once it's created, it can't be required to be rented and turned into rental housing. Obviously, that is the intent of the state law. But nothing, but the state law does not actually require that the owners put it on to the market.
Okay, thank you. And if I could ask a second question, question, Director Simone, I'm, I'm wondering if you have any comment on the Heather Garden variance that was granted. So I believe Mr. Resnick was referring to a project that allowed for a point four five FAR in Heather Garden. And if you can, you know, comment on why that was granted or what conditions made that project different from this one?
I'm sorry.
Wait a minute. The council has consistently taken the position that you evaluate this issue on its own merits. And comparing it to any other project is, is inconsistent with the way this council has always operated. So I caution you of going down this path.
Okay, I withdraw the question.
Council member way.
Just in regards to the ADU. I know during the pandemic, several neighbors whose ADU was then used for college students who needed to be to live there or for in-laws who needed to live there. So I mean, I think we need to realize that ADUs, while we would love them to be on a rental unit, that it's also appropriate for a family to use them for other means, maybe to care for an elderly relative or something else in which they need to have a separated but adjacent space. So I think that's important for our community to realize that that's an opportunity for them also. If they are interested in creating accommodations for relatives, it's an appropriate use too. So but now that you're sitting there, and first of all, I want to thank you for your presentation, Mr. Resnick. We've gone through a lot of staff changes. We've had a retirement of a senior of our planning director and our city managers had to wear about five different employment hats in the last year and a half. Plus COVID didn't make things easier. So your pay, I know it's, it's been a difficult time for getting things cleared. With the pandemic did not make things any better. So I, I just want to put that forward and, and it's, I'm sure you've done a yeoman's amount of patience to to deal with our staff changes. We welcome our new planning director now. So and now she has to get up to speed on things. So just to, to say how important it is that our community realizes that we're a small, very small operation with lots of challenges. So thank you for your patience. Elise, can you address what the staircase removal requirement or not requirement is?
So some of the planning commissioners did express concern with the internal connection between the main residence and the ADU. There's nothing that states that someone can't have an internal connection. But the, because it was a discretionary project, I believe. connection, but the, because it was a discretionary project, I believe the city attorney had advised that as a condition of approval, the planning commission could require the connection to be, or removal of stairs or disconnection of the two units as a condition of approving the discretionary project.
Okay, but it's not a require.
It's, it wasn't, or it was denied. So it was never a condition.
Okay. And I do see on the plans that there is a wheelchair accessible access to the ADU also. Is that a requirement?
I don't know that it was wheelchair accessible.
Oh, I just see ADA path.
Okay, as I know, there's an, there is a path that allows someone to access it, and the applicants might confirm if that's intended to be accessible, but generally, they, we wanted a path of access to that second unit around the house.
Okay. And then just to clarify that, planning commission, one comment was that this would become the second largest house on the block, but the applicants are saying that they are in the lower thirty percent of the size, thirty percent of the sizes of the homes on the block. So that was an inaccurate assessment.
So when the staff calculation looked at the homes within three hundred feet of the site, and there was four, I believe, that are, were over forty percent within three hundred feet, and, but the applicants may have extended that area all the way down the street or used other, other parameters.
Okay. And then this may be to Mr. Resnick, that the Tegnari family resident sent a letter in that you said they were their next-door neighbor. They're on the downside or left, while you're looking at your house. To the right. Okay. Yeah, I see that here. I'm not sure. Hold on. I'm not sure you're on camera.
Oh, yeah. And I think there's, they still have more to their presentation.
Oh, okay. That was my question. Thank you.
I was wanting to, if you want me to answer the question. Here, there. So initially, we got letters of support from our immediate next-door neighbor, where staff felt that they would be impacted by the original plan, and they sent a letter of support saying they wouldn't be impacted. And then we also got a letter of support from our immediate neighbor below us, and he also supported that he would not be impacted. And then my understanding is that today, several folks sent in emails, and we also have, I believe, we have a couple of neighbors here to speak live, fortunately, and many of folks that were planning on being here could not attend for various reasons such as Warriors games and high school baseball games and assorted other things.
Well, I do see emails from fifty quarter Toluca, thirty-nine quarter Toluca, fifty-one, and then the Togneri family, which I don't know their, they didn't have their address. So I definitely have been able to read four. So, great.
Other council questions at this time? Mr. Resnick, if you have additional information that's new. Oh, wait, it finishes. Sky?
I was gonna say, like, there's no rule about this. I think typically the council has allowed other members of the public to speak and then had the appellate and applicant make, if they're separate, if they're different people.
Oh, would it be your preference to wait after public comment? I'll go with the flow. Public comment. Yes, sir. Welcome. Tell us your name and where you live.
I've seen the flags for nearly, I don't know, eight months, four months. First of all, thank you. I appreciate this. I also appreciate the planning commission. Otherwise, we'd probably have yurts and, and domes and things in the area. I was taken aback by reading the minutes from the previous meetings. I don't think that's the way, I mean, to just given an opinion without some kind of fact behind it, like, my bedroom's too big and I don't like that. It's just not, I feel that we're lost in communicating with the planning commission, putting out their opinions, and for us as homeowners to just say, oh, that's his opinion. Boy, I have to delete that. I think there needs to be evidence that backs the opinion, and I didn't see any of that. So I'm here today. I really, I really appreciate the layout of the house. As a neighbor that drives by two or three or four times a day, it's, the view as I pass by is not large, isn't any bigger than the house that's across the street, which happens to have a cube on top of the garage, which isn't appealing to me at all. And two doors down at twenty-seven, there's this behemoth that's tucked into the hillside that was passed by the, by the planning commission, and to have such a, I don't know, gabled house with a beautiful entry and thoughtful roof line, I think it's, it's, it's going to be a terrific addition to, to the neighborhood. The ADU unit, it's kind of neat that, that the hillside goes downhill, that you can drop the entire, you know, height of the building and still have, you know, a, a large house with big bedrooms. I hope we don't go the direction of having ADU units be purposed by a government body. So that's my two cents, because it is my house. I would like to rent it out to somebody while I can, and as soon as I get too old to live there by myself, I'd like to be able to rent it to somebody who can take care of me, and I don't want the government to tell me when that time is. This house is beautiful. I, I think it's going to be a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions and make comments regarding this item?
Next comment will come from James Holmes.
Hi, James.
Hi, James. Regarding the history of the restrictive covenants, fortunately, they were not enforced very long because the subdivider acquired the old Green Bay Ranch in nineteen forty-six, and a year or two later, the US Supreme Court invalidated all restrictive covenants. So they did not play a significant role in the development. I happened to listen in to the second hearing, and I, I'm sorry, on a different matter, but I believe the commission should be upheld because my impression was that the applicant could have followed some relatively specific suggestions from the, particularly the, Mr. Wagstaff, who's a very experienced architect. It is true that a couple of the other commissioners were rather general, but I think Mr. Wagstaff gave some specific comments relating to the math and bulk. He was very diplomatic. He prefaced them by saying he'd been before the commission many times himself and that he didn't want to, uh, design the project, and that's always a dilemma, of course. If you're too specific, you're in prescriptive, you're designing the project, and if you're, if you're too vague, then you're not helpful. So I think he was trying to thread the needle there, and he did say that it was the intent of the commission to get to yes, if, if possible. He then proceeded, I thought, to make some specific suggestions about re-trimming the, the upper portion, and, and he noted that in some respects, the form did not follow the function. And my, my impression was that if, if the applicants had, had listened to, to that and incorporated those suggestions into the project, that it would probably have been approved as many other projects I've seen be approved when they responded to the commission's suggestions. So I, I think the conversation here should go back to the planning commission, and the, the applicant should be encouraged to maybe re-listen to the recording and, and heed the guidance. I think it was very sad that there was apparently a time, time trap here, but I think that if particularly Commissioner Wagstaff's guidance was followed, it would result in a speedy approval of an improved project. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions and make comments on this item?
Looking for any additional raised hands from our audience members. And there's no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible consideration. Who would like to begin? Vice Mayor Paulson, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that you know, that one of the, the biggest factors here is, is the interpretation of the ADU law. It sounds like three things are going on from what I've heard. One is, is the, you know, the boards, the planning commission's understanding of whether ADUs can count to FAR and, you know, what state guidance is, is available for that. The second is, is sort of the objective design standards or whatever standards were the feedback given on, you know, making this acceptable project. And then last is just the timeline. I'm a little confused, you know, about the continuance being denied, you know, running out on April twenty-ninth, but I, you know, I think, you know, I'm leaning towards the fact that we really need to encourage people to allow ADUs and to not consider that in the FAR. Nothing that I've heard, no neighbor complaints, really lean towards saying that the design is objectionable. And so, you know, I'm kind of sitting on that side and waiting, you know, to see if there are any strong arguments to the counter.
Catherine Way.
Sure. Thank you for this very thorough presentation. I know it was on the screen, but we also had it in, in paper form. So I've been able to read that along with it. And when we look at Exhibit A in Attachment seven point one, which was the findings for denial, the first is, there's two findings for denial was design review, and A was compatibility with neighbors. So it, we've had only received one comment from a neighbor in regards to potential blocking of long distance view. But other than that, there, all five of the other applicants, I mean, other neighbors indicated very supportive of the project, including a gentleman who spoke here tonight, who was not on this list of ones who submitted written comments. So I think that you have worked well, it appears that you've worked well with showing your neighbors for many months what this project will look like, and you are on a cul-de-sac. I did drive by there. So people who will have to drive by this location who live within that neighborhood. So it's, there has been a lot of opportunity for neighbors to weigh in on this. And it's, it was also very obvious, evident that there are five or six properties very close by that have also had substantial remodels done on them that, that are within not only your own cul-de-sac there, but around the corner from where you are. So this is not out of character with what's happening in that particular area, in my opinion. The other design, findings for denial was about bulk, and, you know, from one man, one person's bulk is another person's house in many ways. And in reading this review and in looking at your papers, you engaged with a lot of the reduction and bulk restrictions that the planning commission initiated in the March, January twenty-fifth meeting. The reduction of the, the tower, the second-story tower, the reduction of the floor area, the reduction of the entry area. I felt, I feel as if by reading this record, you engaged with the suggestions to the, the specifics that were given. There were comments that you've made that were a little nebulous and was really difficult for you to, to, to determine exactly what was meant by that. So I, I'm, I'm confident that these residents have done what was been asked of them and engaged in community outreach and are committed to continuing to work with the city on doing a fine design there. So I, I don't have any problems with this design as it is. I, I think it's also an important thing that we need to clarify that they are on a downslope there and that this bulk of what we're going to see from the street, I mean, what you see from the street now is a single story, because you can't even see the backside of that house, and there is no road down below it either to look up. I couldn't find one. So it's really a low profile as it is now. This will add a profile that is similar to some properties that are all already on that cul-de-sac. So that's where I'm coming from with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Har.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and thank you guys for your presentation and your hard work and your patience with the administrative process that we have here in the city. It can be frustrating. I know that from personal experience sometimes. So, so I appreciate your, your patience and willingness to go along. And I also have to say that in looking at the materials that have been submitted, the design for the project is very attractive and probably is an improvement over some of the neighbors' designs. So I don't have any problem with that at all. And I'd be inclined to go along with what I think is the sense of the council to approve the appeal. The one thing that does give me pause is the ADU issue, and I don't think that's really an issue for the applicants in this case. I think it's maybe more of an issue for the city to maybe provide some more clarification on how, what is being proposed as an ADU would in fact be used as an ADU, because right now, we don't have any ability to constrain that. So to me, when someone is proposing a project that says, we're going to do an ADU right now, that's fine, but there's no constraint on that use. And again, it's important for me just because I am just absolutely terrified of the process that we're having to go through in our housing element to meet state, state requirements for housing, and I want to make sure we're doing what we can.
If I can just ask, if you could, I'm a little confused about your comment. So are you saying that you want staff to emphasize, we want people to use ADUs in a particular way? Because I think staff.
I'm not saying that specifically.
I think staff has been very clear with all applicants what the law is.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that specifically. I just think it may be helpful outside the context of this individual process for us to have some more discussion about how ADUs are counted, really for purposes of ensuring that we get to take them in, into account for purposes of our arena calculations. So that's not an issue for this applicant. I'm, I'm inclined to approve the appeal without getting further into the weeds on that issue tonight.
Okay, I just want, I guess I want to be really clear. It's not an issue for any applicant. I mean, we, we can't make that an issue for any applicant.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we can right now, and I just would like to have further discussion as a, as a council, but that's not for this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Candell.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think you nailed it in the beginning. I think this appellate is doing exactly what the city has asked him to do by creating an ADU, having a, a design that fits in with the neighborhood. I'm all for it. All right. I'll just say one thing. I don't want to reflect any further really on the planning commission meetings. I like to accept their observations and learn from the experience. But I do believe that if we were looking for a case study example of how to best implement an ADU, we couldn't find a better project than this. It's a, it's a uniquely located site where the proposed ADU is tucked in on the downslope side of the existing building. So I think it would be a great example as a case study, and I think we ought to look further at the ADU issue and take charge of how we want to promote and encourage it, rather than react to stuff and let them get caught in the traps within our existing much-too-heavy zoning ordinance, which needs to be edited down to about an inch. So I think this is a great opportunity to reflect on that as well, and I'd like to suggest we have a meeting with the planning commission to talk about these lessons and other things that we're going to be challenged with that would cause us to edit our zoning ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that, I think you captured what I was trying to express better than I actually expressed. what I was trying to express better than I actually expressed.
You did fine.
I think, thank you. But I think we're of the same mind on that subject. And again, that's not a discussion for tonight. But it's a challenging issue and I just really would like to have some further discussion about it.
Well, I just want to express my gratitude to the parents for showing us the opportunity that's for us tonight because I think it's larger than this project.
Yes.
And so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, what I would do is I would ask the city attorney, I would say that I would like to make a motion approving this project. I would like the wording and the findings to be correct. So I'm going to ask the city attorney to suggest the wording for such a motion.
I think I'm looking to the community services director, community development director to confirm, but I think that if the, if the motion is to
Grant the appeal and direct the planning commission to make the findings and bring it back to the city council for approval.
Yes, which is, which is option number one in the staff report.
I want, I was trying to make sure that I, that option one actually captured bringing, coming back to the council with a resolution, making the findings, if you're going to, if the motion is to grant the appeal and approve the project, but to direct staff to return with a resolution.
And, and the findings should be simple. Once you take the ADU out of consideration in the FAR, I believe. I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I believe the motion would just be, you could condense it down to option, option one in the staff report.
Counselor. Yeah, I can do. Option one in the staff report.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. If we please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrah.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Homer.
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for participating in the discussion on this item this time. I think it was a valuable helpful discussion. Look forward to taking the issue, our new planning director, community development director, so community services director, excuse me. This is, this was a very interesting and I'm sure enlightening project within your, on your honeymoon. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is our presenter for item number 3.1 is available on Zoom. Is that correct? Madam City Clerk.
Promoting you to a panelist position.
Anyway. So I think if it's amenable to the council, we should return to that item.
We will return to our item three presentations and proclamations. We have a presentation this evening. An update from Larkspur Corde Madera School District by Superintendent Brett Geithman. Welcome, Mr. Geithman.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you having me here this evening. I'm excited to give you a school day, a school district update. And, and again, just want to extend great appreciation for the ability to reconnect with the city of Larkspur. Is it possible for me to share my screen? Is that okay with everyone?
Available to you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do a screen share. And I just want to make sure, does everyone see my slide? This is every student every day. That good? Cool. Okay. So again, my name is Brett Geithman. I'm superintendent of Larkspur Corde Madera School District. I'm going to start first with the slide. What we're doing is geez, for the past few months, we've been going around and reconnecting, rebuilding those relationships with a variety of our stakeholder groups. Of course, one of which important stakeholder group is you, the city of Larkspur. You know, the pandemic did kind of isolate a number of us and we feel that these community connections are incredibly important. We're hoping this is one of many opportunities to engage with you. The work that we do together, we serve as these hubs of the community and we're all interconnected in so many different ways. I'm going to start first with this slide. This really encompasses what we're all about here in Larkspur Corde Madera Schools. We're here for every student every day. And this became even more evident over the past few years, but I just want to just hold on to that for a second. And I'm looking forward to illustrating the different ways that we do this. So who is, you know, who are we? Who's LCMSD? And so just a quick snapshot of us, Cove, Neil Cummins, Hall Middle School. We have thirteen, or thirteen hundred forty-three students, ninety-six certified teachers, specialist administrators, and forty-seven classified staff. Here's our board of trustees. Here's our leadership team. And these are our strategic priorities. So the strategic priorities, we have five of them. They were developed back in 2017. These, we engage in a process with a variety of stakeholder groups, community members, parents, teachers, staff members, trustees, to identify what is the direction in which are the hopes they have for our school district. And so these strategic priorities guide us in our decision-making process. And so one of, of course, our strategic priorities is to facilitate these collaborative partnerships, which is why, of course, we're reaching out to you today. I wanted everyone just to take a look at this picture for a moment. This is a picture that's early on the pandemic. So some of the things you might notice, we have the masks, we have Plexiglas, we have theater measuring tape. You'd see all the kids are six feet apart. We have our teacher up front and you can see our class sizes were lower because we were on an AMP model. The most important part of this picture is that we had kids in school. And I'm proud to say that Larkspur Corde Madera led the charge for in-person learning, not only in our local community, but across the state and across the nation. We received Learning Policy Institute out of Washington DC wrote a research brief on us. We partnered with California Collaborative for Educational Excellence as well. We are featured in CSBA, which California School Boards Association. We are extremely proud of the ability to operate for 140 days of last school year in person. We opened up campus on October 5th of 2020. This was four days after we were permitted to, via governor, you know, some, we were ready. We are ready to do this. We're ready to have kids back. And this is equity, work, and action. Because as superintendent, I can share with you that we had kids that had extremely different learning conditions when they were on Zoom. We had students whose parents hired former teachers who were teaching them all day to students who were attending their Zooms in closets of their parents' employment. That's not okay. That is not equitable. And one of the, one of the fundamental components of education is leveling that playing field and providing opportunities for all students in our communities to become successful. And so that's why we were so committed to return in person. So number of things here, we're just, we were really excited for this. Our COVID pandemic response continues to be identified as, as one of the, one of the successes throughout the pandemic. And it really took everybody, it took our collaboration with our teachers, our staff, our community to really make this happen. And, and we're just extremely proud of that. We also have award-winning schools. One thing that's really exciting is in 2021, Hall Middle School was named a California Distinguished School. So this is out of all middle schools and high schools throughout California. There were, I think, about two to 300 that were named California Distinguished Schools. Then the California Department of Education, they get to pick two schools out of that list to serve as your national distinguished schools. So right here in Larkspur, our Hall Middle School was identified as one of two middle and high schools as a national distinguished school, and we are exceptionally proud of that. In 2019, they are identified as a school to watch. And you can see our Cove School was a California Gold Ribbon and Neil Cummins was California Distinguished School. So really proud of our schools and the work that's going on there. The reason why this is possible is because of you, our community. It's our community working together. It's our community supporting our schools. It's our community believing in public education. It's our community showing up for our kids when our kids need us the most. And that's what we did here in Larkspur. That's what we did in Corde Madera. We were able to show up for our kids and our kids thrived in it. And I'm sure you might have seen some recent reports that came out. When it comes to learning loss, learning loss was cited throughout the state. It was even cited here in Marin County. The asterisk next to that district that didn't have learning loss or didn't experience it was here, right here in Larkspur Corde Madera. And, and again, we have to, we have to go back out to our community and just express deep gratitude for the support that you give to make this possible. One of the ways that the community makes this possible is through community funding. So our schools with California funds is this smaller piece of the pie here, this thirteen point two one million dollars. These are our local control or LCFF dollars here. This, along with the yellow and red, is what California and the government, federal government believes is the appropriate amount of funding for schools. Now, some of you may know my history. Actually, I've been up here superintendent for five years, but I have served in other communities ranging from districts like ours, like in Manhattan Beach, to underserved communities like Long Beach. And I got to tell you, when you're relying solely on what California and the federal government provides, your schools look dramatically different. You have high class sizes, you have limited access to technology, art, music, PE, those element, those, having those specialist teachers at the elementary level in many schools that doesn't exist, counselors, those are few and far between. So we really, our schools are, they go from great to even greater because of our community support. And if you take a look at this green slice of the pie right here, this is what our community funding consists of. And just to zoom in on that, you can see the 3.52 million of that is our parcel tax. That is a big component there. We got our Spark Foundation at 1.25. We actually own Marin Primary, which I'm sure everyone in the room is aware of. So we have a lease revenue there. And then we have some other local revenues. But you can see here the importance of community funding for our schools to really enhance that student experience to what he, what we hear in Larkspur Corde Madera expect for our kids. One of the things that is coming up, and so this is just an informational type item, is we do have that parcel tax that I mentioned, which is a large component of that community funding. That parcel tax expires on June 30th, 2024. The Board of Trustees passed a resolution to place the parcel tax on this ballot for this June. You'll see that. It's named as Measure E. You can see here, this is the multi-year projection. We have to turn these multi-year projections to show to not only Marin County Office of Ed, but for the California Department of Education that we can remain fiscally solvent. What one can probably clearly see on this one is we've got some red in here. And so what ends up happening is you can see, since our parcel tax does expire on June 30th, 2024, that does mean we have an enormous deficit in our budget, which means that also our reserve goes down to a negative eight percent. When you have a reserve below three percent, that is when you lose your local control and the state of California then shores up your budget and turns your district into one of those that I mentioned with high class sizes and very limited extra special courses and electives and things of that sort for students. So in Larkspur Corde Madera, one part of our budget is personnel. Eighty-six percent of our budget consists of people. And so when you do the math in terms of what the parcel tax funds, it funds the equivalent of 28 teachers. When we have just shy of 100 certificated staff members, that would be losing almost a third of our staff would be the equivalent of that. So this is something that, that myself and the Board of Trustees felt was important to put on this ballot. So you can see here that, that we have placed that we're not here, but you can like what I can share this evening is that that has been placed on the ballot and our local community will be voting on that in June. Um, here are all the things that our community funding supports. I know I've gone over a number of these in terms of what we're able to accomplish here in LCMSD. One big one that's near and dear to a lot of parents and community members is lower class sizes. You can see the electives, you can see our librarian, librarian clerks, elementary PE, our Spark Foundation funds all of our counselors, our art, music, technology, and engineering. So again, our community funding is really, we look at it as that important and necessary extra scoop in our district that takes our school district from great to greater. These are the amazing facilities that we have. I'm sure many of you drive by these schools every day, but here's Spark and our community support and action. So here's all middle school. Here is taking a look at the arts programs that we have, our engineering programs that we have throughout our schools. One thing that's incredibly important is even despite the challenges, the pandemic that we face with the pandemic, one thing that we were committed to was ensuring that we could take advantage of historically low interest rates. And so we refinanced the bonds that our community supported. This is going to save taxpayers 6.9 million over the life of those in interest. So we felt that was an important thing to point out there. These are what the bonds funded these amazing schools. So this is the inside of Cove. You can see just how the landscape has changed in terms of providing a more up-to-date type of learning environment, flexible seating, nano walls, the ability to collaborate with peers and teachers. Got a similar structure here at Neil Cummins. Again, amazing facilities here throughout the Larkspur Corde Madera Schools. I'm going to finish with our goals. Where are we going here in Larkspur? What are, what are, what are, what do we want for our, for our schools over these next three years? Number one, our number one goal is in regards to equity. We want to close these equity gaps. We want to have the ability to not only academically, but looking at our student connectedness to continue to make traction. This is something that we have posted throughout our schools and I'm going to be straightforward and vulnerable with everyone here. This is an aspiration. This is not, this is not true. And the reason why I'm saying that is not, that it's not true at this moment is that there are people in our community that don't feel this. There are people in our community that don't feel as welcome as they should in every single space. And so in Larkspur Corde Madera Schools, we are committed to making this image, this sign, this statement, the actual feeling that we have throughout all of our schools and spaces. And so, so we're committed to this and that's why it's our number one goal. Our number two goal is academic growth. We continue to excel in terms of academics despite even the pandemic. And we're going to continue to push our students to continue growing and growing to new heights. Then finally wellness and connectedness. We know that a good part of school social, emotional learning, even more so with the pandemic and, and coming off the pandemic. So those are our quick goals. In a snapshot, those three goals, the update on LCMSD schools. But on behalf of the Larkspur Corde Madera School District, you know, I just wanted to come out, reach back out to the city of Larkspur, share with you our appreciation, share with you the importance of working together as a community and, and being here as a hub within our community. As we emerge out of the pandemic, we hope more opportunities to engage with one another, talk about important issues that we have going on in our community and how we can continue to work together and partner.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Are there, are there questions or comments from council members for Brett? Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yeah, I'll start off. Yeah, I want to thank you, Brett, for, for doing the presentation and I, you know, I, I think last council meeting, I reported out on the committee work, which was, we were asked to liaison, council member Candell and I with the Larkspur Corde Madera School District, you know, particularly on financial issues during the pandemic. And and so I, you know, at, you know, sometime this year, wanted to get together with the superintendent and follow up. And I, you know, brought it to the council that, that I'm, you know, impressed with the results, you know, I took Larry Chu's, you know, advice of refinancing debt or pension obligation bond. And I kept, you know, bringing that up at the meetings and, you know, it's, it's just really nice to see that, though there was no way to do it in the, in the school teacher system to have a POB or anything like that, they found a facilities bond. And the amount that they're saving is significant relative to the, you know, upcoming tax measure. But I think one of the things that really struck me, and I think it's a high highlight of the presentation is the message we're getting from Brett is what I hear from Chief Norton, what I hear from Chief Ruben Martin is that, and also from our city manager, is staff is everything and staff is so important. And I feel like, you know, you know, Chief Thornton would say, I used to get 90 applications. Now I'm getting eight. And I think what the superintendent is sitting on is a really well-run operation. You know, if you read the grand jury report or anything. But, but, you know, I think the issue is can they sustain staff? So, you know, I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that, you know, the, the bond measure that they're bringing up is something that, that is worth considering. And I've really tried to study cost Marin and, you know, better together to understand the issues. And I'd love to have more dialogue on that. But I just want to highlight that, you know, I think that this is a really important partnership. It brings a lot to our community. It's done a lot during COVID. I've been really, you know, you know, pleased to work with this group. And, and thank you for coming and hope that, you know, this meeting is something we can do annually just to see the state of, of that, that agency. And just to encourage us as a council to think of, you know, how we can support them because I think that, you know, whatever it is, a lot of it comes down to retaining qualified people to keep their, you know, keep their operations running as they are. So thanks again for joining and that's it for me.
Appreciate that very much. I think we all agree that the strong bond between the
Very much. I think we all agree that the strong bond between the city and the Larkspur, Portimera School District is something that we have a long tradition and high values. Other council member questions or comments? Councilmember Harof?
No. Just thank you again very much for that very informative presentation. And so, so proud of your accomplishments and on the academic front and in other ways as well. Thank you.
And thank you for taking time in your busy evening to come share this information with us. I know you're, you've had, had a long day.
Yeah, we have a board meeting right now, so I appreciate your flexibility to allow me to, to join via Zoom and then jump back to my board meeting. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Well, we'll let you go. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
All right. Well, now move back to the order of our agenda items. The next item is business items. We have a continued discussion of our 2022, 2023 budget. So first part this evening is review of the preliminary budget that we started last meeting. Maybe I have a staff report, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the third and final presentation meeting before we will enter into budget hearings at your next council meeting on June 1st. As has been our practice now for several years, this is when we hit you with the line item detail and give you an opportunity to ask questions specific to any particular light item or any of the assumptions or philosophies that have gone into various aspects of the budget. And then in the second part of the presentation, you'll get your first blush of the capital improvement plan modifications for then, then the coming year and the revised five-year cycle. I really have just a brief couple of comments because I'd like to open it up and give you the opportunity to dive into this. And we've already set the table for you in our prior meetings. That this budget makes some key assumptions about revenue and is generally more optimistic than we've been about revenue for the last few years. In particular, sales tax, we think has bounced back much better than we expected, and we expect that trend to hold and continue. We're a little more bullish than we've been on the transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax, but it's, it's not climbing it up to pre-pandemic levels yet, and it might take a while before it reaches that level that we've seen in the past. The budget funds a number of key elements. In particular, we are proposing with this budget to get our staffing to where we think it should be for the foreseeable future. So you'll see in this budget that there are 34.5 funded regular positions. And that point five is because we're proposing that a new position come online at mid-year. So eventually we actually, I think in the next budget, be looking at potentially 35 positions. We believe that this funding is, the staffing is sustainable in the current trends that we're seeing in our revenues. With that said, do want to remind you, we had suggested that a small cushion be built into our use of our rescue plan money, which is one of the things that federal government's encouraging, because, because the federal government's encouraging one of the uses of that money be to maintaining your staffing and to employ people again. So we did have a cushion in there that can help smooth any issues that we, we may experience. This budget now with the light items, you're getting to see all the different regional costs, all the different joint powers, authorities and other agencies that we contribute to. As you might expect, they're starting to get back to their normal staffing levels and operations. So they're coming up a little bit in terms of their expenditures. One of my concerns that I've expressed to you is that in dealing with some adjustments on our pension costs and just dealing with getting our staffing levels where they need to, need to be, we aren't yet hitting our goal with respect to funding our OPEB liability, our other post-employment's benefits liability that for us is our retiree medical program. We have some money programmed into this budget. As the council knows, it's my desire that probably in a meeting this summer, we would look both at some of the potential reserve money that's been freed up with the Bonner Bridge project coming to the, to an end to compensate for some of the OPEB shortfall, so to speak, in terms of our contributions over the last several years. And then I think we'll also bring some policy guidelines for you to consider that would direct us in years where we do have revenues above expenditures when we close the books, that some of that would contribute to the OPEB liability to, to get us back where we need to be in terms of tracking on that particular issue. One of the things that none of us are quite sure about is how to cope with inflation in terms of this budget. Now fortunately, we know what our staffing costs will be for the entire fiscal year. So we don't have to necessarily have an escalator for inflation in that respect. And that is the major expenditure in, in your budget that's proposed to you. Probably the one we'll have to monitor the most is fuel. Fortunately, the city operates a fairly small fleet. Your two major JPAs that you fund, police and fire did account for anticipated inflation in fuel in their budgets. They have much larger fleets to cope with. But we're starting to see, just as you are in your personal lives and in your business lives, we're starting to see our cost of doing business creeping up. So we'll have to monitor our material bottom line. It may necessitate some discussion at mid-year as we get a better sense of where the economy is headed. But we feel comfortable with the expenditures as we didn't have advanced to you. And as I said at the last meeting, I'm much more optimistic in presenting this budget than I've been in probably two or three years. So I consider that a good thing and a rare thing for me to say to you. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to the council. Do you want to note Administrative Services Director Kathy Orm is here with me. She's the brains when it comes to the budget. So if you get too specific, I'm going to immediately call on her to answer your questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I'll ask for questions from council members. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Way?
So on page 22, the Measure A Marin County Parks, the item line for 2022, 23 is, is nothing. And can you explain to me where that is? And I know this is on the ballot again for renewals.
Yeah. So one thing to keep in mind with measure, we don't know if it's going to get renewed.
Right.
But one thing to keep in mind, I think, I think we are about half of the cities. So the cities get 15% of the money, cities in a couple of the special districts. 15% of the money is taken and there's a formula for passing it down. Larkspur has been receiving between 90 and 100,000 a year under Measure A. I think about half the cities, ourselves included, made us an important decision not to put any Measure A money into operations. We've never put a dime of that money into an operational cost. What we've done with it is do infrastructure investment. So regardless of how that measure turns out, there won't be an operational or staffing or program effect on the city. What has been a wonderful benefit for Larkspur is we went and use that money to fund projects in as many parks as possible. And so a lot of the mini parks, mask plan, the neighborhood mark, plan, which called for playground upgrades, resurfacings, new grass, that sort of thing. Those got done with Measure A money. So if the Measure A isn't renewed, we won't be able to kind of do a new cycle of going through our, our parks. And, or if we do, we're going to have to find another revenue source to do that.
Okay. And my second question is, in my experience, the discretionary sort of allocations for funds for the council to discuss, generally it fall under the community grants and the transient, a transient occupancy tax, the TOT, those two. And this TOT is listed at $60,000. And I know it's, it's difficult as we come out of COVID to see what the amount of, of occupancy of our only hotel will be. But I see the estimate here is 60. And then I see the community grants. It looks like you're estimating, it looks like 25,000. No, that was from 2019. You're not estimating anything for community grants. That's on page.
Can you tell me what page you're on? I'm sorry.
Page 23. And other than those two, do, generally we don't have other buckets in which we allocate or decide as a council to allocate differently.
Well, staffing is your biggest discretionary item.
Right.
To say yes or no to proposals for staffing. So you do actually have some significant discretionary decision here because I've asked you to add a few more positions to the budget.
Yeah.
You might want to talk about that. Sort of on this money, I think what you're talking about is yes, through the parts where we've tended to look to as a council manager for you to decide if you want to invest in, in a particular thing in a given year. What you do with the TOT, the hotel tax, is the bulk of it goes into the general fund. It's an important revenue stream for the general fund. What you've done, those you've taken 1% of the TOT of the hotel tax, and you've placed it in a special fund to invest back into the business community. And so I think that's what you're actually referring to.
Yeah.
That investment piece. The most significant things that you've been doing for the last few years is you, you pay for, you pay money to the Chamber of Commerce and you have an agreement with them that will bring you actually, I think at your next meeting.
Yeah.
To consider. That contract used to be more inclusive, encompassing of not just money for the operation of the chamber, but also paying for events by just handing money over. Last year, we made a decision to separate out events. And that we would consider event sponsorship from, for chamber events, the same way we consider event sponsorship for other activities. And so that's been changed and you'll see the event line has its own allocation.
I see that.
And then the other thing is you've, you've given a grant for the arts.
Right.
That's, I think, the one sort of community grant that's been proposed. And then.
Okay. I just, you know, is that just looking at where we might have discretion to allocate some funds that are in these categories. So I look forward to that presentation though.
About the.
At the next time about what the Chamber of Commerce opportunity is.
Oh, okay. So the other thing is some of these funds, this budget, we don't digging into what to do with the reserves. Some of these funds do have reserves that you may want to talk about at a future meeting, if you're looking for discretionary opportunity.
And then lastly, I think Kathy, thank, you know, I, since I've been on the council since 2013, these budget workshops and budget information just gets clearer and clearer. So I appreciate that. I know we have better software, but I think that that really provides to the community real transparency in where our finances are and easier to access for people who don't have a finance background.
Other council member questions? Councilmember Harof?
Just very quickly. Thank you for that introduction to this discussion. It's very helpful. The scariest thing about all this to me is the OPEB liability. You know, there was a, there was a period of time a few years ago where we made some very significant progress, I think, in planning for meeting our OPEB obligations. And for a variety of reasons, many of which are outside our control, we've, we've kind of fallen back. So I'm glad to hear the plan to have a robust, robust discussion of that maybe later on in the summertime. And see what we can do about that. Because I feel like we have, that's an obligation that we have. And we need to make sure we're doing, we're meeting the commitments that we've made in the past. It may not be able to do it in the way that we had hoped, but it's still there. So I look forward to that, that conversation. And then just a kind of a little small question. I noted that you've, you've got in the budget the contribution to the MCCMC homeless fund staying level.
Yeah, I wanted to call that one out just because it's up for renewal. So if you prove the budget, then we're approving as part of that signal to the homeless fund that you've approved continuing the contribution. The management, the Marin managers have a group and
Right.
made a pretty strong recommendation that the funding levels stay the same.
Okay, that's actually gets to the question that I wanted to ask because I know there have been some discussions with the folks who are managing the program to significantly increase the amount of funding for that. And I didn't know where that stood.
Yeah. So in, in the desire to be fully transparent, that was one of the more hotly debated discussions among city managers in Marin this, in the last many months was what to do with the request to grow the fund rather substantially. And I would say the vast majority of managers didn't feel that that made sense budgetarily for each city, nor in the way that fund was created. So
Right.
That's why the funding level has been set at the same amount.
So what we're doing is pretty consistent with what we expect the other cities to be doing as well, cities and towns.
Yes. And actually, Santa fell, we're very grateful to them because they have the staffing to do this. So they actually manage the distribution of the money into a program or programs. And they've been actually managing an RFP right now to see potential uses of that money to keep certain programs alive and see how the money could be used appropriately.
Well, I think that's a prudent outcome on this particular issue because I was involved in some of the initial discussions with the program staff, where they articulated good reasons for wanting an, an increase. And I give them credit for that. But, you know, I think there was a lot of reluctance to go as far as was being suggested. So this seems to be an appropriate outcome.
Other council member questions? Councilmember Candell?
Yeah, thank you. Two, two quick ones. The first one is there's some significant, I guess salary increases. I'm looking at the building department going up 50%, rec 30%, library 30%. Is this because we're, we're jumping to pre-pandemic levels? Is this because of inflation? Is it because, can you just help me understand these? Because these are much bigger jumps than in previous years.
The approved, the councils approved for both the managers and the employees, a three-point, is it 3.5 this coming or 2.5 Kathy for, for July 1, 2.5? So there's a 2.5% pay increase you've already approved that takes effect on July 1 and carries through the whole fiscal year. The remainder is the addition of positions. So that's where you're seeing those more substantial increases. It's because we've added some positions in those areas.
Are these two pre-pandemic levels or are these surpassing those?
The library is driving some of that in the community services department. It's to get us back to the level before the pandemic. The increase in the building division is because we're going to shift from a consultant model to an in-house model. So although you're seeing the staffing costs jump, you're seeing a correspondence, corresponding assumption of a drop in the amount of money going to consultants.
Perfect. Thank you. And my, my, my other question was, and this may tail into you if you want to answer this after, because it has to do with OPEB, library, storm drains. You know, we've got a lot of projects coming up that we're, we're pretty committed to. We're hoping for outside funding, which may or may not, you know, help us. Do we, where, where is that money coming from if we don't get a matching grant on the library or we don't have a ballot measure pass on the storm drains? I mean, do we have a plan B for those?
So the each one of those is sort of a different answer. So the library, essentially you have an agreement through a letter of intent with the Commons Foundation that they'll raise $5 million and will then ask the construction community through a request for proposals, what $5 million will build. So that's plan B for the library is when they hit that $5 million target, we'll find out what $5 million would buy. With respect to the OPEB liability, one of the reasons that council member Hoff was alluding to, one of the reasons we've struggled to make a dent in our contributions to our OPEB trust. And I want, I want to be clear. We're sort of talking in shorthand about putting money in an irrevocable trust. So that money grows and defrays future costs and obligations. Right now, we are meeting our O P E B obligation annually by paying as you go. We pay for retiring medical as it comes in. The goal is to build up a trust fund that takes care of that obligation. We needed to get our pension costs smoothed out before we could really cope with that obligation. So the, the plan B is to then build, much as we did with the pension. We need to build a model where we have a consistent contribution coming from the city's general fund to deal with. The O P E B liability. And I think that there isn't, I can't really say there's a plan B. There's just now that we have smoothed to a certain degree our pension costs. And we have predictability that we didn't have before, we can now build the O P E B contribution into our budget. I think in a way that makes more sense. What we've been doing. Up to date with that particular obligation is much more reactionary to where we are at the end of the year. And that's not a healthy way to build up a savings. So we'll only just start doing that. And then on the storm drains. You know, I guess I'd say more to follow. I'm. I'm hopeful that as the community hears about our challenge with storm drains, they. They, that resonates and folks want to find ways to support us to make, make it a reality that our storm drains are up to date and safe. We'll continue to look under every rock for grant monies and other opportunities that are out there. If we continue to address the storm drains with our current funding levels, then. What we'll have to do is come up with as calculated and strategic an investment plan as possible. To rebuild the system and it becomes much more of a risk management exercise. You know, how much risk are willing to assume in any one year by not addressing a particular storm drain? And that's, that's, that's a tough discussion, but that's sort of the plan B that we would have to go through. My preference would of course be to find some funding sources and start to really invest in the system. So we never have to have that really difficult conversation. So I hope that answers all your questions.
That was great. Thank you again.
Other council member questions before we move on. All right, Dan.
I did actually want to go back to council member way because I realized now that I'm digesting the lines you're looking at. We, we kind of, because of the pandemic, we start, we changed the way we were managing some of the T O T funds. There's a big amount now listed and transferred operating. And the idea there was to give us some flexibility to deal with who was actually doing things in the pandemic period. So the money moved over to give me more discretion to, to put it where you wanted it to go. I think as we go back to, I don't know, we'll ever go back to true business the way it was three years ago. But we'll go to some semblance of that. We'll probably start to have this T O T budget. Back to what you're more accustomed to seeing, which is the itemized things that you're sponsoring.
Let's continue.
Again, Mr. Mayor, if there aren't other questions, then this budget, as you see it, is, is what you're going to get.
I understand.
First. So I'm, I'm prepared to, to close if, if that's the council's desire, then you get to have Mr. Skinner come up.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing the budget return next month and look forward to Julian tonight.
Did you want to?
Yeah, let's ask for public comment on, on the budget, preliminary budget review.
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there is no public comment.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Julian. Nice to see you. Boy, is that bridge looking good.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. I'm Julian Skinner. I am the city's Public Works Director. And we have for you tonight a presentation on the proposed. Twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvement program, capital improvement program budget. So we're just going to quickly go over the basics of the, the budget, what we do every year. What goes into the budget and then we'll talk about some of the projects. You've seen these numbers before, but just as a reminder for members of the public out there, we're looking after thirty-three miles of streets, including. Things on the streets such as streetlights and traffic signals and signs and striping. About fifteen miles of storm drains underneath those streets, which will be a focus moving forward. As we've mentioned many times of our capital program and then our parks and then our buildings. So how we develop the C I P is we have a number of condition studies that look at our buildings and our streets. And tell us what we should be doing to maintain them or rehabilitate them. That's for existing infrastructure. We also have planning documents to look at what future needs might be, such as our bike and pedestrian master plan. And we have plans for the mini parks and the Piper Park also. And then from time to time, there are calls for grant out there, such as Transportation Authority Marin. Has some safe pathways to school grants and there's all other transportation for clean, transportation fund for clean air. To put out grant proposals for items that might be in some of those planning documents. And then unfortunately, every now and then there's something that comes up that's not planned that we have to fix and it's of a significant size. And it becomes a capital project. Where does the funding come from? This is a breakdown of the bulk of where the funding that goes into paying for these projects comes from. I just split this up a little bit because the funding changes over time and we do have some one-time funds. That we have and that are going to be going away. So as you look at this, moving forward for our significant needs. Which, as we've mentioned, is our, our streets, our storm drains and our buildings. The three funds that are shown here in green are what we typically put into the capital program. Each year in a recurrent basis, we get gas tax from the state, which includes a bump, which is the S B one component that was added a few years ago. We get the countywide transportation sales tax comes into us from TAM every year. And then we have vehicle impact fee for our streets that comes from development projects. Their impact of the construction vehicles on the street, as well as from the refuse company for the impact of their trucks on the street. So those three green funds come in, it's not always the same amount of money every year, but it's pretty steady and those come in. And they will hopefully be with us for the foreseeable future. The other funds here are a little variable. Grants kind of come and go and a lot of them are competitive and highly competitive. And, you know, we were successful. We've got a big grant for the bridge that's paying for, you know, close to ninety percent of the Bon Air Bridge is being paid for with a federal grant. We've got some recent grants for pathways. We got a safe pathways to school grant from TAM. That's going to help some bike improvements on Doherty, as well as a transportation fund for clean air. That's going to pay to extend the path that we started building a few years ago in front of Redwood High School on Doherty. And then, as you know, our citywide paving plan fund, the bond proceeds from the measure B sales tax. That funding we're going through now as we get through the last year of paving all of our streets. So that's not an ongoing, that fund has a cap on it and we're going through that as we pave our street. So that fund will go away at some point in the near future. County Parks Measure A came up previously. That's similar to the TAM countywide sales tax, but that one needs to go to the ballot to be renewed. So that's why that's a question mark. And then the last one's restricted revenue. From time to time, we do get private donations to help us on some of our projects primarily. Whoops. Wrong button, primarily for parks. So just a reminder, what we're looking at are projects are not our routine daily activities. These are larger scale improvements. That sometimes span multiple years. And so we do a five-year plan for the C I P. When we bring it to you for adoption at the next meeting, you're only approving the funds for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. But it's a five-year plan. So we show you what our projections are going to be moving out in, in the future years. But again, you're only appropriating funds for next fiscal year. So we take those first two slides, we have all of our needs from all of our documents, then we have the pots of money and then we match them. I'm come up with our capital improvement program. So here we're going to jump into the projects. Got them separated in different categories. The first one is building, which isn't very exciting for twenty-two, twenty-three because we don't actually have any. Money going into the capital program for twenty-two, twenty-three. But this is a fairly large category in need as opposed to funding. So I have, even though we don't have any funded projects this year, we do know that we have some needs here. Both of the city's fire stations are in need of significant rehabilitation. And then we've also talked previously about the issues with City Hall and the library. So those you'll see later on in the presentation, they're listed as unfunded projects. We don't know when the funding is going to come in and we don't know when those projects are going to be undertaken. So the next category here is parks and we do have some money proposed for the C I P this year for parks. A couple of new projects and then some carryover funding from previous. The biggest influx of money here is a private donation for Niven Park. So we already had some parks measure A money. In Niven to do some improvements around the play structure and we are working right now with a private donor who is looking to augment. The funding for that project and let us enhance that project a little bit. So, and then we're also looking at putting some of that parks measure A money into the next round of our park signs. As you recall, a few years ago, you approved a standard sign for the parks and our plan was to roll those out as we got through these parks. And we've been a little slower than we would have liked because of COVID. We haven't got another park project underway, but we're probably going to have about three. Over the coming year. So we'll be rolling out the signs for those parks with that. And then we're going to do some repaving of the path over the Hamilton Park. So that's parks and I'll move on to the transportation drainage and utilities. Again, you're not going to see a lot of new money going into the capital program this year. A lot of money was funded previously and we have some carryover projects. Typically, we start the design of a project in the previous fiscal year and so all the funding goes then. And then it just gets carried over into the next year. So what you're going to see in the yellow column here is new funding that you haven't seen before. Which is just over two million dollars in the, in the streets. And the first lot here, two hundred twenty-eight thousand is for East Sir Francis Drake. So as you can see in the first column here or the column to the left of the yellow, this project already has two point four million in it that you have allocated previously. This addition this year is for two things. One is when we awarded the project, we came to you with a budget amendment based on the low bid. But we failed to count in the money that we paid the county of Marin when they paved a section of the city's street with their project. So we paid the county a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to pave a city portion of East Sir Francis Drake with their project. Last summer. So we need to account for that money in our budget. And then also we've added some money to the construction management anticipated cost for this project because it will be night paving work and there are additional costs. With night paving, for example, we need an inspector out there and it'll have to be a different inspector than we usually use. Because we need them during the day for all of the other inspections. And so we're not able to use the same inspector. So we'll have a little bit of extra cost there. But we'll have a lot less headaches paving that street at night. So we think it's worth the additional funds. And then as we move down here, again, the numbers in the yellow column are new funding for this year. I did highlight or bold a couple of other projects that you've previously funded, but they were not in the capital budget. At the beginning of last year, they were added as mid-year amendments, as you recall. Pump station repairs, Laurel Avenue Drainage, and then the Lagoon Inlets. So it's not new money. You've added it already. But I did want to highlight them because you didn't see them during the capital presentation last year. So the new projects, the first one here, the, the, the big funded project for the upcoming year is. Twenty-twenty-three pavement maintenance project. So this will be our first paving project after the completion of measure B program. And so the number that you see here, the one point two five million at the moment. Is what our consultants are telling us it will cost, it will cost us each year to keep our streets in the condition they're in. It also happens to be about the amount of local funding that we get each year. If you take those numbers that I showed on the, one of the previous slides, your gas tax, your TAM measure A A. And your vehicle impact fee. If you take those three funds together, they're close to this one point two five number. So this may not end up being. A million dollar project every year. We may end up doing a two million dollar project every other year. Because sometimes it's more cost effective to do more streets. But the other thing you'll see is we'll be doing some, some more preventative maintenance treatments. Our streets will be in such a condition that we're not going to see the intensive grinding and repaving that we've been going through over the last four years. You're going to see some more lighter treatment, some thinner overlays. And we'll be making more efforts to do some crack sealing and doing some spot repairs before we have to completely repair. A street. So this is your first funding of one of those new pavement maintenance projects. The next project here is the twenty-three to twenty-eight bike, pet and ADA. So this is a project that gets set up each year. We set aside some money to do miscellaneous bike and pet. And access improvements that come up through the course of the year, primarily through resident requests. And these are, these are items that are too large for our maintenance crews to undertake. But they're not big enough to comprise a whole project by themselves. So for example, if we get a request for an ADA accessible parking space or an access ramp somewhere. Or somebody says a bike path has, you know, a curve on it that would be better if it was in a different location. And we evaluate it and based on the amount of money we have each year, if we feel that's an appropriate project to undertake. Then that's what this money is for, kind of the, the, the smaller scale improvements. And then the next project is a Doherty Drive buffered bike lanes. So this is part of the project that you approved. Tonight, this will restripe Doherty Drive from Magnolia all the way down to the high school. And put a buffer, a striped buffer in between the bike lane and the travel lane. It'll also put flashing lights at the crosswalk at Hall Middle School at the Piper Park driveway. And then as you look at this, again, it's a five-year plan. So we do show funds in the out years. So what you see here towards the bottom is the projected pavement maintenance programs for each of the next four years in the, in the capital program. So that was the new funding. Again, I mentioned you have approved projects in the past that are still ongoing that have a lot of funding that's being carried over with them. So the Bon Air Bridge is an ongoing project. It'll be complete really soon. But again, that's all in all, including the construction, the staff time, the consultants, that's a thirty-seven million dollar project in your C I P. The Bon Air Bridge mitigation project will be going out to bid soon and hopefully under construction this fall. You've already funded that in a previous year. So there's four million dollars in your capital budget for that program. Doherty Drive Rule Twenty Underground is closing up, Redwood Highway Bike and Pedestrian Path North. So that's a continuation of North South Greenway. Again, you've allocated this product, this funding in a previous fiscal year. But we're waiting for the Caltrans project over the creek to finish before we initiate this project. Parkway Storm Drain currently out to bid. And then measure B Group Four. So this project, this is the local streets portion of it. We haven't bid that yet. But we did take out Doherty and Magnolia and they have been bid separately and, and they were both awarded on your consent calendar tonight. So again, there's eight million dollars worth of paving there that you didn't see in the previous slide because it had been previously allocated. Last fiscal year and then so on. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the other projects that are listed on here. This is just to show you that there's more than going on, just the, more than just the five projects that you're funding this year. So I just want to quickly highlight some of the bigger projects. Measure B, I've mentioned before, we're doing a lot of paving this summer. Doherty and Magnolia are going to go first. We're trying to time them so that they're paved when school's out. Because there'll be a lot of traffic impacts with those projects and we can minimize those during the slower. Or the lesser volumes of traffic during summer. And also Easter Francis Drake is scheduled to be paved in the next month or two also. And then the orange streets in here are the ones kind of south of the building we're in now that are scheduled to be paved as part of Group Four. As far as measure B funding goes, that citywide paving plan fund that I talked about earlier, this is a slide we've shown before. There was, our initial estimate was twenty-five point three million. We've spent eleven, almost eleven point one million to date. We're estimating there was, at the time we did this slide, we were estimating it was about twelve point four million of streets left to go. So we were at that time projecting we'd land about two million below our estimate. So what I've done is updated that to show all of the projects that are left and show us where they are. So what I've done is updated that to show all of the projects that are left and show us where they are. So the 12.4 number shown in the first column of numbers here, that's the the number that we had allocated for these projects. And then we're just updating them in the last column as the bids come in. And so we're not doing quite as well as we did with the first half of the program where we're getting a lot of bids and we were able to come in $2 million under our estimate. But right now, we've bid out about half of the remaining projects and we're a little under the estimate. So we may not be able to save a lot more money, but it looks like we're not going to have to eat into that balance that we've saved also. And then I did just want to highlight the bridge. So based on this is as of the end of last month, we're 96% of the way through as far as the working days. 1,430 of 1,491 days. We're still running about 800,000 on change orders. That's about 3%. There are a couple of change orders we're negotiating now with the contractor that may tick that number up a little bit. But based on where we're at, we'll still end up below 5% of contingencies on that project. And then as far as how much has actually been built and paid for, we've built and paid for 97% of the bridge so far. So we're down to the last 3% the last two months. And I think as the city manager mentioned at one of the last meetings, we do have a small scale ribbon cutting ceremony planned for, I believe it's, well, I will give out the date because I'll probably get it wrong, but we'll be sending out some notices. It's somewhere in early June. And then each year, as we go through the capital project, when we finish out projects, we close them out so they don't have to get carried over. So I'll be working with Administrative Services Director to make sure all the funding gets gets correlated between Public Works and Finance, and then we'll close these projects out. And if there's money left over, that money goes back into the fund and helps with other projects. I will point out these, the first five are projects that were completed or we anticipate will be completed by June 30th, so we won't carry them over. The last one is a project that we're basically going to abandon and we're going to roll it into that 2023 pavement maintenance project that I showed you before. When we started out the Measure B program and we anticipated all of the treatments we were going to do for all of the streets, we had about three streets. We thought we were going to do slurry seals on, and so we had separated them as a slurry seal project. But it turns out now that two of those projects, by the time we got to year four, they need more than a slurry seal. So we were only left with one slurry seal eligible project and a slurry seal is a project that has a very big mobilization cost. When those contractors come to town, they like to do a week's worth of of work because they'll charge you for a week's worth of work, whether it's a day or a week. So we're going to take that one street left over and we're going to fold it into the next pavement management program. So we're just going to close that project out. Here is everything I said over the last 10 minutes in a table. So these are all the funds for all of the projects. These are all separated by the fund sources. So if you're interested in where the money's coming from, each one of these vertical columns shows Park Development, Gas Tax, Vehicle Impact Fee, TAM Local Roads, that's your Measure AA, RMRA Gas Tax, which is your SB1, Citywide Paving Plan, which is Measure B. And then the last column is Grants or Restricted Revenue, which is private donations. Again, this is just the new money. This is not showing you all of the carryover money that's been allocated before. So what you're going to see moving forward with the capital project is as we move into the next years, you're going to see a lot more focus on preventative maintenance on our streets. Our streets are going to be in good condition, and so we're going to be looking at keeping them in good condition as well as looking to see what we can do with our storm drains. You know, we've got, we know we've got some pretty big needs in our storm drains. We're undertaking closed circuit TV inspection program so we can get a better handle on priorities on which of the storm drains need to be addressed first. So you know, we've got the first part of our capital program worked out for the next few years. We know what our needs are. So now we're going to be working on the second part, which is finding the funding and matching that funding to some of those needs. And so one of the good news here is, I think I've shown this before, but this is showing you why we're going to preventative maintenance for our streets. The top line in orange here is showing you where our streets are going to be when we're finished with Measure B. So we're at a 76 PCI now. Once we finish all of our paving this year, we'll be up to 92, I think it is. Yeah, paving will, the day after you pave, your your PCI goes down. So but with the one to 1.3 million a year, we'll be able to keep it above 86. And again, the goal is to keep it above 80 because that's when it's it's manageable, cost effective to use other types of treatments versus digging up and replacing the streets. So there's a lot of lines here and it's good to be on the the top line for once. I think we've shown this many times in the past and we've been on one of these bottom lines. So.
I thought I heard 85 as the as the the projected goal last month and now it's 92. That's great.
Yeah, so we'll we'll hit 92 just because of how fast we're doing all of our streets. But then what happens is the streets we paved five years ago are going to drop down to a certain level and yeah, it's kind of the day after you, they're only, the street's only 100 the day you pave it. The next time somebody comes out and rates it, they're going to rate it lower. But yeah, when we started this whole program out with Measure B, we had we said we'd like to get 75 and then we worked with our consultants. And they said, you really should be able to hit 80 if we can do it quicker. 75 would be more like a 10-year program. And so we ran everything out and we were, you know, hoping to get 80 and now it looks like we're going to be able to get 85. So it's so far, one year, we've still got a lot of paving to do the summer, but so far, so good. So that's a good part. Here's the, I won't call it the bad part, but this is the neat part. So these are the projects that there's varying degrees of of need here. But these are not ranked in any order other than when they first got on this list. And then I've moved some of them around because it makes sense. Some of them are related. But these are your projects that if we had the money, we would undertake. And so there's some big numbers on here. We've talked about City Hall before. Don't know exactly what that project looks like. That's why it's not in the CIP. It's listed as an unfunded project. We don't know if it's a renovation or rebuild. And we're going to show the worst case scenario numbers here. So $17 million for a complete rebuild of this building. And then moving on, you've got the two fire stations there that we've got newer numbers for. And then the library is on there in various phases. And then also the storm drain repairs is on there too. And then you've got some smaller ones in there like College Avenue Woodland Intersection and some the last piece of the bike lanes on on Doherty Drive. So big numbers here, over $100 million in unfunded projects. And so part of the challenge moving forward is going to be to prioritize some of these needs. I think we know already what some of these priorities are going to be with the buildings and the storm drains and then looking for funding opportunities to get these projects off the unfunded list and into the capital program. So that's the end of the presentation. I'm available for any questions.
I might add just a couple of comments.
Mr. City Manager.
Can you go back one per side? So first I want to emphasize because I know this number sometimes causes confusion on the library. That's the number attached to the official adopted master plan document vision in total scope. It's not what you've been working on with the Community Foundation, which is a phased approach and they're targeting phase one. And so we don't want folks to see that number and say, what the heck happened? That that relates to a much bigger project.
Don't worry, they'll be distracted by the bottom line.
And you can see that that Julian's got up above, he's got the maximum costs associated with building a 5,000 square foot library. So then I just, I know last year we had caused some confusion in talking about that. The other thing I wanted to point out is we've reported several times to you when we planned for the Measure B revenue stream, we were very, very conservative in what we thought Measure B would generate. And we were happily, very, very wrong. It's been generating considerably more revenue than we projected. So when we bonded, when we issued bonds, we went, we only did 1.6 million because we thought on our conservative projection, we were sort of thinking 1.8, 1.9 million annually. We're doing more like 2.4, 2.5 million. And that's because we're capturing a lot of internet sales, we're capturing car sales, things that we don't capture in our normal base sales tax. I'm mentioning all this because when you see even now, Julian's had to up the maintenance costs because I think even when we started, we thought it'd be about a million a year. Now it's about 1.25 a year. And of course, we've got two factors we can't totally control. We've got the two of those revenue streams are variable. They're the gas, two gas tax revenue streams are going to, are going to go up and down depending on cost of gas and how many people use gas versus electric. And then the second thing is we don't know what the cost of maintenance is going to be if we go through this inflationary period. So I wanted you to hear that because I want to then say the great news about the way we've been managing Measure B is we can start to use that excess capacity for a variety of projects. But number one is to make sure we always have enough money for the maintenance. And so that's that's always going to be our plan is, you know, first we pay our bond payment. Second, does the maintenance program have enough money for next year? Does it need a supplement for Measure B? And then we go on to discuss if there's any other uses for Measure B money in a given year. And we haven't done that yet. We've been only about the bond payments. That's going to be a robust conversation going forward. And then lastly, if you said it, I missed it. Julian, can you remind everybody? Because some of those numbers are big and scary when you see the bridge. What was the federal contribution versus our costs so that folks understand?
Yeah, so during the design phase, the federal contribution is 80% of all costs. Once you start construction, they reimburse you at, it's a weird number. It's 89.43% of all your construction and your construction management and your staff costs once you hit construction. So practically 90%.
And so I just wanted to to remind everybody who sees those huge numbers, that's not the local number. That's the the total cost with all the federal money built into it. Now, I'll give it back to Julian and give it back to the council. Thank you for indulging.
Okay. Are there questions of the Public Works Director on the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2022, 23? Quite an extensive list. And I do, I do have one question, but it's a selfish one. So I'll hold it till the end. Catherine Way.
So this will be the first year of sort of looking at maintenance of our big program. So my question is, how how is capturing the cuts into the surfaces of the roadway coming along? Okay. Because I noticed there's just a lot more cut into our fresh pavement than I was hoping we would see. And are people or whoever utility is cutting into the pavement or residents, are they being proactive in reimbursing us for that? Or is that how it works?
Yeah, so typically what we're doing is six months before we pave a street, we send out a letter to everybody on the street and say, we're going to come pave the street. Please don't dig into it. But you know, emergencies do happen. Most of what you see is 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 utilities. A lot of it is PG&E that don't currently have the resources to jump on all their facilities with six months notice that we're going to go pave a street. Now, having said that, we did give them our five-year plan, but they still don't have the resources to get out and address all of test all our pipes for leaks. And obviously, if there's a gas leak, it's got to get fixed and they repave the road and they repave it to our standards. But in addition to that, they do pay the in-lu fee. I haven't had any issues with any utility questioning the in-lu fee. I think a couple of homeowners here and there. Primarily if they've been working with a contractor and the contractor hasn't let them know about the in-lu fee upfront is when we typically will run into a some objections. But if it's the homeowner who's applying for it, then they're given all those fees upfront. And yeah, we're, we've been collecting them. It's I mean, it is money coming in, but you know, we prefer not to have our streets cut into. You know, it's many, it's money that's building up and it'll, if a street, you know, only lasts 18 years instead of 20 years because somebody dug into it, then in theory, that's what that money is is there for. But we find that the letters that we sent out have been pretty effective. We've seen groups of residents on a street getting together and hiring the same contractor to get their laterals fixed beforehand. It's it's usually somebody who wasn't planning on selling their home and then they have to do the inspection and it triggers a lateral replacement or a utility break.
Vice Mayor Pauls.
Yeah, Julian, great presentation. A couple of questions. One is, is, you know, fairly buried, but on the unfunded projects, can you explain, I don't really know the difference between Fire Station 15 improvements and Phase Two. You know, one's half a million, one's 10 million, $800,000.
Yeah, so the the first phase of it was actually identified a few years ago. It's similar to what we did in this building six years ago, I guess. It was basically replacing windows and a repaint repaint of the exterior. But we ran into a lot of significant issues when we did this building and the cost I think doubled from what it started out as because of all the things we ran into. So that similar project still exists for the fire station. But as of, you know, lately, we've been looking at a larger scale project. So there is still the potential to do that smaller scale on the fire station. We just haven't decided that it would be that it should be, it's something we should fund at this time, given that there's a lot of unknowns with that fire station.
I just wanted to chime in that because we now participate in a joint powers authority with Court of Medar and we have one fire operation. They have similar challenges in their firehouses. And so through the JPA, we're looking at what's the best approach for the two communities together. And so the Fire Council actually is on track to get a presentation within the next few months about not only these costs that you're hearing about again in our budget, the same ones that are reflected in the Court of Medar documents. But how can we talk about all four of these assets in using them in the best way for the community? And then what's the best way to tackle these costs as partners? So I think that conversation will take place through the Fire Council and then come to each council that way.
Okay, thank you. And Julian, the other question, I'm just trying to file away in my mind that the storm drains issue. So you know, my understanding, you know, tying together, you know, previous conversations we had is the video assessment, you know, part of the issue there was flushing out the drains with the drought. So you know, that was delaying things. And then you know, where we got the cameras is going to come from Ross Valley, then we got our own. But you know, what I generally understand is we're still trying to understand what the state is today. And you know, to how to reprioritize, you know, so the 2019 Storm Drains Report is is pending updates based on that. So we can't really talk about funding or priorities until we have that, right?
Yeah, I mean, what we know about the conditions of the storm drains to date is an educated guess based on the limited information that we have from the pipes, the very limited sampling of pipes that we've seen already. So in order to take that $20,000 kind of ballpark number and refine it, we're doing a more extensive review of the storm drains to see if that little sample that we know of that is bad is reflective of what portion of the the city's infrastructure. And then in addition to that, it'll help us prioritize where the money should be spent first because we'll know which pipes are worse than others. We'll see pipes that maybe need to be fixed within the next five years and we may see pipes that have issues, but we think we can get another 10 years out of them. So yeah, I mean, the 20 million is is basically is a placeholder based on knowing how old the pipes are and having seen what we've seen in the limited inspections today.
Okay. And what what's your sense of when, you know, that analysis would be done, like rough timeline?
Yeah, we're hoping to get it done within six months. So definitely before the end of the calendar year.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you.
Other council member questions, Julian. Councilmember Kendall, do you have any questions?
Thought I might piggyback really quick, Mr. Mayor, because I put Julian on the spot, but I don't think that number's going to get smaller on the storm drains. I'd be shocked if it's.
You never know, but it's highly unlikely. You never know, but it's highly unlikely. I've never seen, no.
I, I just want to make one observation. I can't say when. You, you can remind me when we did, went through the twenty fifty plan process. Scott, I believe, was. Now, the first one.
The first one's going on, oh gosh, twenty years ago-ish, and then we did an update in twenty eighteen.
Well, we, at the first pass, the bottom line of all the infrastructure projects that we could fathom at time was half the number we saw tonight. So things are not going to go down. Bottom line number.
I, I, I do want to say, though, I think the council and the community should be proud of the fact that, you know, there's nine, I think there's nine major goals in that plan, in the original plan. In the big ones, we've been tackling. We took it seriously, and we fixed the police station situation. We've tackled the roads. We have also addressed our corporation yard, which was not necessarily as obvious to folks, but was a critical one. And so we're making progress.
We've aggressively attacked that list of projects, more than the last ten years, more than the previous twenty. I'm just saying the cost of things has accelerated astronomically.
Yes, that's very true.
Other council member questions or comments on the capital improvement program? All right, thank you very much. That's, that was a great presentation, very thorough, and it's really helpful to see this over a series of, of months, looking at the information presented in different ways. I feel like we're understanding it and seeing all the things in a, a way. And I'm sure the, those that are watching this on live stream are in the tapes later benefiting from this.
You might want to check if there's anybody who had a question too among the audience.
Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on the capital improvement program for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. There's no public comment.
All right, thank you very much.
I did want to just, I'll offer one closing comment. I know some of the council members have had their own interactions with some of our regional and state and federal leaders, and we've had interactions. I think one goal that, that Public Works and, and all the staff that work on projects are gonna have this year is to move as many into the planning phase, because we're hearing more and more, hey, there might be money available, but you need to be shovel-ready. And shovel-ready means you gotta actually have a, a plan that you could put out to bid pretty quickly. So that's something we'll, we'll be looking at, because we've heard that several times recently, so.
I do have one question regarding Magnolia Avenue paving. Is, is Magnolia Avenue south of the downtown gonna get repaved?
Yeah, the project that was just awarded tonight will pave Magnolia from the city limit at the south to the city limit at the north, which is, it's actually college by the time it gets there. So everything except for the two blocks that we just paved with the ADA project will get paved.
So here's my question. After the last meeting, Vice Mayor Paulson and I were leaving the building, and a couple of our residents approached us and said how wonderfully beautiful the downtown looked. And then they asked in a follow-up email to me about crosswalks at Marin Primary Centennial Park in West Baltimore. So my question to you is, how easy would it be to look at those crosswalks in the repaving effort?
I, I, I'm gonna take you off the hook for this one, because we're looking at all of them. I, I'm not sure what we've seen some of our neighboring communities do is ideal. And we may need to ask folks to walk one more block before they cross some of the streets. Not every single crosswalk in a quarter-mile stretch should be taken to a certain level.
Sure, I'll follow up with.
That's important, but it's something that I know that Julian gets a lot of inquiries about. It's reached me a lot of the time, so just, I feel compelled to put that out there.
Sure, everything in balance. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to, from the business items to the closed session. We have one closed session item with labor negotiations pursuant to government construction five four nine five seven.
We'll move into the conference room, and I just want to thank the staff and let them know they definitely.
Thank you very much. Thanks for making our lives easier.
I'm hoping not.
No. All right, we'll, we'll report, report out any reportable outcome.
I'm sorry.